Okay, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 13th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next, next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and we do have one item on the Consent Calendar. Would any Commissioner wish to pull this item for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would now ask if any member of the public wishes to comment on the Consent Calendar item, which is the Carmel Drive Town Homes item and other items.
And I would also mention, anybody attending via Zoom, if you wish to provide comment on this item, please press the raise hand button now in the app. Oh, looks like we do have somebody here. Okay. They're bringing in Campbell Ziegler.
Hi, Campbell Ziegler, Walnut Creek President. Just voicing my support for the Town Home Project. It's great to see the city. I mean, I know housing is a big problem in California, and so it's great to see Walnut Creek improving its housing stock and working towards helping the issue.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
Not seeing anybody else raise their hand. It doesn't look like there's anybody in the chamber.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Pickett is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have none?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, so that brings us to item three. There we go. Sneaking in. Hello. No problem. Do you want us to wait a moment? Why don't you go ahead? Yep. Look at this power. Man, do we start when I say we start? It's almost early as well. Nice. There's an issue with one at the back. I'm not waiting. Yeah. We're waiting for Pam, so we're good. Now that I announce this to everybody in the world. All right, excellent. Good evening and welcome to the July 27th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Reiser is absent tonight, but we have a quorum with six.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next, next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, and we do have one item on the Consent Calendar. Would any Commissioner wish to pull this item for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would now ask if any member of the public wishes to comment on the Consent Calendar item, which is the Carmel Drive Town Homes item and other items.
And I would also mention, anybody attending via Zoom, if you wish to provide comment on this item, please press the raise hand button now in the app. Oh, looks like we do have somebody here. Okay. They're bringing in Campbell Ziegler.
Hi, Campbell Ziegler, Walnut Creek President. Just voicing my support for the Town Home Project. It's great to see the city. I mean, I know housing is a big problem in California, and so it's great to see Walnut Creek improving its housing stock and working towards helping the issue.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
Not seeing anybody else raise their hand. It doesn't look like there's anybody in the chamber.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And Chair Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have item three, Public Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made, questions posed, request clarifications or refer the item to staff. So just to reiterate, this is the time for comments on things that are not on the agenda. So if you have something to say about our SB nine ordinance, that's later. And also, I'd also would like to remind everybody that not all speech is protected and that we do not tolerate any sort of hate speech or other unlawful speech with regard to public communication. So that being said, do we have any members of the public who'd wish to comment on items not on the agenda?
And again, I would note, if anybody who's attending via Zoom wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, please press the raise hand button now. And I'm not seeing any hands go up.
Okay, great. So with that, let's move on to our next item, which is item four, Public Hearings, and we have one hearing scheduled for project.
I am so sorry, Madam Chair. Actually, do have a speaker for public comment. They provided a speaker card.
Oh, okay.
And I just forgot about it. I didn't see anybody get up.
All right, well, let's please do that now then.
This is Chris Palomo. I apologize for that.
Evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I thank you first of all. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union at a local 152, and we represent all across the county. I'd like to speak to you tonight about a few things that are very important to me and many of your constituents that live here in the city of Walnut Creek. So yeah, I'll go over them. It's going to be labor standards, so whenever you're thinking about, you know, proven projects and stuff like that. It is crucial that we elevate labor standards and ensure fairness for all workers involved in the building in this city of Walnut Creek. I will focus on three important topics: livable wages, access to health care, and implementation of a joint apprenticeship program. First and foremost, it is time we demand fair compensation for the hard-working individuals who construct and shape this city. Developers and contractors must be held accountable for paying a livable wage to their employees. No worker should have to struggle to make ends meet, especially in a city that prides itself on progress and prosperity. By setting and enforcing wage standards that reflect the cost of living, we can assure that our workers have the financial stability that they deserve. Furthermore, access to health care should not be a luxury reserved to a fortunate few. Developers and contractors must be obligated to provide comprehensive health coverage to their employees. The physical well-being of our workers directly impacts our productivity, morale, and overall quality of life. By guaranteeing health care benefits, we not only prioritize the welfare of our workforce, but also strengthen the entire community's health and resilience. Lastly, we must emphasize the importance of skill development and fostering to highly skilled workforce. A joint apprenticeship program, which brings together industry experts and aspiring workers, is a powerful tool in achieving this goal. By implementing such a program, developers and contractors can ensure that individuals entering the industry receive the necessary training and guidance. This apprenticeship program will not only provide valuable hands on experience, but also open doors to long-term career opportunities. In conclusion, by elevating labor standards, ensuring livable wages, providing health care, and implementing a joint apprenticeship program, it'll lead to a more equitable and prosperous city. Not only will workers thrive, but the entire community will reap the benefits. When we prioritize fairness and accountability, we set a strong foundation for the future growth and success in the city of Walnut Creek. And I look forward to, if you guys ever have any questions, I can sit with each and every one of you, kind of go over what we see out there and the labor standards going on in your city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Much appreciated. All right, anybody else in the chambers or online who would like to make public comment on an item not on the agenda? Andy, how we doing?
There's no raised hands, and this time, I don't think I'm forgetting anybody.
I think you're doing great. All right, so then let's go to item four, which is Public Hearings, and at this time, we'll start our hearing for the SB nine ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment. No, the SB nine study session here, and we're going to start with, see, Andy, it's contagious now. We're going to start with the staff report, and Andy's going to do that for us, so take it away, Andy. Thanks.
All righty. Seems like every time I go to give a presentation up here, the technology has changed. So I'm actually here just to provide an introduction, and of course, I left my notes over there. See, that's the mistake I made by actually having notes. So it says here I should say hello. Anyway, I'm Andy Smith. I'm the senior planner, heads up long-range planning for the city. And what we have tonight is a study session, so we can have a little bit of fun tonight, so to speak. This is, of course, to discuss a new permanent SB nine ordinance. Of course, there'll be quite a bit additional information in the presentation. Our main purpose tonight, or the main thing we're looking for, is seeking input both from the public and from this commission. And kind of the order of things, be a staff presentation, and then, of course, take questions from the commission if you have any, then public comment, and then would turn over to the commission for deliberation. And what I would suggest you consider is there are basically a number of subject areas that are spelled out in the staff report, section by section, and the order is also going to be followed in the presentation. improving its housing stock and working towards, um, helping the issue.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Um, do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
Not seeing anybody else raise their hand, and it doesn't look like there's anybody in the chamber.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so, uh, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll sign off.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Needing.
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman.
Yes.
And Chair Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have, um, item three, public communications. This portion of the re- meeting is reserved for items not on the agenda. Um, under the Brown Act, the commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made, questions posed, request clarifications, or refer the item to staff. So just to reiterate, this is the time for comments on things that are not on the agenda. So if you have something to say about our SB nine ordinance, um, that's later. And also, I also would like to remind everybody that not all speech is protected and that we do not tolerate any sort of hate speech or other unlawful speech, um, with regard to public communication. So, that being said, do we have any members of the public who'd wish to comment on items not on the agenda?
And again, I would note if anybody who's attending via Zoom wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, please press the raise hand button now. And I'm not seeing any hands go up.
Okay, great. Um, so with that, uh, let's move on to our next item, which is item four, public hearings, and we have one hearing scheduled, uh, for Project.
I am so sorry, uh, Madam Chair, actually do have a speaker for public comment. They provided a speaker card.
Oh.
Uh, and I just forgot about it. I didn't see anybody get up.
Let's please do that now then.
This is, uh, Chris Palomo. I apologize for that.
Evening Chair and, uh, planning commissioners. I thank you first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union at a local one fifty-two, and we represent all, uh, Contra Costa County. I'd like to te- uh, speak to you tonight about a few things that are very important to me and, uh, many of your constituents that live here in the city of Walnut Creek, so, um, yeah, I'll go over them. It's gonna be labor standards, so whenever you're thinking about, you know, proven projects and stuff like that. Uh, it is crucial that we elevate labor standards and ensure fairness for all workers involved in the building in this city of Walnut Creek. I will focus on three important topics: livable wages, access to healthcare, and implementation of a joint apprenticeship program. First and foremost, it is time we demand fair compensation for the hard-working individuals who construct and shape this city. Developers and contractors must be held accountable for paying a livable wage to their employees. No worker should have to struggle to make ends meet, especially in a city that prides itself on progress and prosperity. By setting and enforcing wage standards that reflect the cost of living, we can assure that our workers have the financial stability that they deserve. Furthermore, access to healthcare should not be a luxury reserved to a fortunate few. Developers and contractors must be obligated to provide comprehensive health coverage to their employees. The physical well-being of our workers directly impacts our productivity, morale, and overall quality of life. By guaranteeing healthcare benefits, we not only prioritize the welfare of our workforce, but also strengthen the entire community's health and resilience. Lastly, we must emphasize, uh, emphasize the importance of skill development and fostering to highly skilled workforce. A joint apprenticeship program which brings together industry experts and aspiring workers is a powerful tool in achieving this goal. By im- by implementing such a program, developers and contractors can ensure that individuals entering the industry receive the necessary training and guidance. This apprenticeship program will not only provide vulnerable, uh, valuable hands on experience, but also open doors to long-term career opportunities. In conclusion, by elevating labor standards, ensuring livable wages, providing healthcare, and implementing a joint apprenticeship program, we, uh, it'll lead to a more equitable and prosperous city. Not only will workers thrive, but the entire community will reap the benefits. When we prioritize fairness and accountability, we set a strong foundation for the future growth and success in the city of Walnut Creek. And I look forward to, if you guys ever have any questions, I can sit with each and one, every one of you, kind of go over what we see out there and the labor standards going on in your city. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your comments, much appreciated. All right, anybody else in the chambers or online who would like to make public comment on an item not on the agenda? Andy, how we doing?
There's no raised hands, and this time I don't think I'm forgetting anybody.
I, I think, I think you're doing great. All right, so, um, then let's go to item four, which is public hearings. And at this time, we'll start our hearing for the SB nine ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment. No, the SB nine, uh, study session here, and we're gonna start with, see Andy, it's contagious now. We're gonna start with the staff report, and Andy's gonna do that for us, so take it away, Andy, thanks.
Alrighty, seems like every time I go to give a presentation up here, the technology has changed. So I'm actually here just to, to provide an introduction, and of course, I left my notes over there. See, that's the mistake I made by actually having notes. Uh, so it says here I should, uh, say hello. Anyway, I'm Andy Smith, I'm the senior, senior planner, uh, heads up long-range planning for the city. And, uh, what we have tonight is a study session, um, so we can have a little bit of fun tonight, so to speak. Uh, this is, of course, to, uh, discuss a new permanent SB nine ordinance. Of course, there'll be, uh, quite a bit additional information in the presentation. Our main, uh, main purpose tonight, or the, the main thing we're looking for, is, uh, seeking input both from the public and from this commission. And, uh, the, kind of the order of things, uh, be a staff presentation, and then, of course, take questions from the commission if you have any, um, then public comment, and then, uh, would, uh, turn over to the commission for deliberation. And what I would suggest you consider is there are basically a number of subject areas that are spelled out in the, uh, staff report, uh, section by section, and, uh, the order is also gonna be followed in the presentation. And if the commission so pleases, you may wish to, um, discuss each of those sections separately or independently, just, you know, one after the other, rather than trying to save up all of your comments on everything all at once. And really, all we're, we're, we're looking for, hopefully, is a majority consensus for each of the items. Now, of course, there may not be consensus, and that's perfectly fine. But really, we're, we're not, there's not gonna be any, um, there's no resolution, there's no formal action being taken tonight. We're basically seeking input and will be returning later in August with an actual draft ordinance that will have taken into account all of your, uh, input. So with that, actually, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultant, Heather Coleman. Heather, and, actually Heather and I used to work together many years ago. Um, and, uh, as it happens, uh, she, of course, has many years of experience in planning and, uh, many years of experience writing zoning ordinances in particular, and in fact, has also worked with, uh, one other Bay Area city on crafting their new permanent, uh, SB nine ordinance as well. And, you know, you think, oh, only one, well, actually, there's not a lot of cities that have permanent SB nine ordinances as of yet. Most either have none, or just very quickly adopted an urgency ordinance like we did, because the state law was passed, leaving very little time to actually take action. Heather also, as you can probably tell by the fact that I used to work with her way back when, uh, in a different jurisdiction, she, uh, also has public sector experience, which is actually really important, because that means that she's, as we say in the, in the industry, she's worked the counter, she's had counter duty, which means she's actually spent time, frontline time, with the public, uh, actually implementing zoning ordinance regulations, explaining them, reviewing permit applications and the like. And that's really an important bit of background to have for somebody who's actually drafting regulations, because they'll have had that experience and that insight into basically writing rules that are actually usable and implementable and hopefully somewhat understandable, at least as zoning ordinance regulations go. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Heather, and, uh, she will take you through SB nine and, uh, what we're looking at tonight.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Heather Coleman, planning consultant. So, um, Andy already gave you a bit of an introduction to what we're here to do tonight, and I will take us through the rest. So, we're here to develop regulations implementing SB nine in Walnut Creek. These will replace the interim regulations that were adopted in twenty twenty-one and extended in twenty twenty-two. Really wanna focus on the areas that the city is allowed to regulate, um, because much of SB nine already, um, describes and prescribes what cities must allow. But within the parameters of what state law allows us to regulate and set standards on, that's what we wanna focus on. So as Andy mentioned, um, the purpose, uh, tonight of this study session is for you to give staff input so that we, they and I can draft, um, an SB nine ordinance, a more permanent set of regulations. Um, just to recap what SB nine is, um, it's called the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Act. As the name suggests, suggests, it's intended to help alleviate California's housing crisis and provide more, um, variety of housing types, a greater variety of housing types. In short, it requires cities to allow duplexes, or two primary units, on each lot in a single-family residential zone, and also divide any lot into two, any lot that's located in a single-family residential zone. It went into effect, um, the beginning of twenty twenty-two. It applies to all single-family zones. This is a map showing where those are in Walnut Creek. And it's worth noting that seventy-five percent of the land, approximately seventy-five percent of, of the residentially loaned, zoned land area in Walnut Creek is zoned for single-family residential uses. There's some exceptions to, um, where SB nine doesn't apply, they're listed here. A lot of them have to do with environmental constraints, um, an individual site also. You know, uh, SB nine development cannot allow, I mean, involve the demolition of affordable housing or existing rental housing. Walnut Creek adopted an urgency ordinance in twenty twenty-one and extended it in twenty twenty-two. This was right as SB nine was about to go into effect. So at that time, um, the ordinance just, uh, includes standards that are the minimum that are required to comply with SB nine, um, and they set certain standards, such as height, floor area, objective design standards, and protection of highly protected trees. So, now here we are in twenty twenty-three. The interim ordinance or urgency ordinance is going to expire in December twenty twenty-three, and it cannot be extended any more times, um, per state law. The last year and a half since SB nine went into effect has allowed a little more time for analysis. A person can develop two primary units that take the form of either a duplex or two separate single-family homes, um, on a, on a single property. And in addition to those two primary units, they can do as many accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units as are allowed by state law. Um, on a divided lot, um, cities must allow them to have at least two units per lot. So that would be a total of four, if you take the, the pre-existing lot. Comes out to four. Setbacks are also established by state law, so city can set, cities can keep their normal front setbacks. But when it comes to a rear setback or an interior side setback, by which we mean, um, you know, where a lot abuts another lot, um, the maximum that cities can require for an SB nine project is four feet. When there's an existing structure there, like for example, somebody has a detached garage sitting at the back of their lot, and it's right on the property line, um, no setback can be required if somebody converts that into an SB nine unit or if somebody, um, constructs, uh, an SB nine unit in the, to the same dimensions and in the same footprint, basically, as the existing structure. Um, another thing to keep in mind is cities have to allow at least eight hundred square foot, two eight, eight hundred square foot units per lot. And, um, and if there are any, um, zoning standards, development standards or design standards that would preclude two eight hundred square foot units, those need to be waived to the extent that they would allow the two eight hundred square foot units. Oh. Okay, there we go. So, for each of these topics, we'll take you, well, I'll mention what state law says. So in the case of floor area I just mentioned, you have to allow at least eight hundred square feet, or two eight hundred square foot units per lot. And, um, the interim ordinance, Walnut Creek, uh, said the maximum that you can do for an, uh, an SB nine unit is eight hundred square feet. Other jurisdictions that we surveyed, most of them did not set a floor area limit, or if they did set one, it was something more moderate that is, was more similar to what they allowed for ADUs, such as a thousand or twelve hundred square feet. Some did not set a floor area limit. Um, in that case, an SB nine unit, um, by which I mean like a two-unit project, each unit, there, it would just, it could be as large as any single-family dwelling in the same district. When, and so basically, I've mentioned the three options that you see here as A, B, and C. And another idea that has come up is to allow the first primary dwelling on any lot to be any size, and then, um, restrict the second one to, uh, to either, you know, the eight hundred square feet you have now or the, uh, something more moderate, more similar to the ADUs. Speaking of ADUs, on the next slide, um, this, for comparison purposes, this is what the, the city of Walnut Creek currently allows for accessory dwelling units. You can see that it varies based on lot size and how many bedrooms you have, but it ranges anywhere from eight hundred and fifty to a thousand square feet. So one comment that staff, or one response that staff has gotten at the counter when people come in wanting to find out what they can do with their lots is, well, I can only do eight hundred square feet? You know, there's not a lot of incentive to do that if you could build a larger accessory dwelling unit than you could an SB nine unit. So, something to keep in mind. Building height, SB nine really doesn't say anything about building height, just that you need to make sure you allow two eight hundred square foot units. The interim ordinance set a height limit of sixteen feet, and that applies whether it's detached or attached to the main house or the first house. Other cities we looked at did a range of things. Some of them had a lower height limit for, uh, SB nine units than they did for, you know, single-family homes in the same district. Some just regulated SB nine units the same as they did, um, single-family homes in the same district. We noticed that several of them are doing kind of a, a, a two-part structure if, um, or, you know, format, where if, if the SB nine unit meets the standard setbacks, the regularly required rear, inside, and front setbacks, then it can go up to the same height as a house, any, any regular single-family dwelling. But if it takes advantage of the reduced setbacks that state law allows and goes close, you know, as close as four feet to the side and rear property lines, then they would limit it to the same height that they limit a detached accessory dwelling units to. And we, we put a range of sixteen to eighteen feet, 'cause that's in, in line with, uh, some new state law on accessory dwelling units. So, the, those are two, uh, the three options are keep the height limit low, vary it based on setback, or allow SB nine units to be the same height as other buildings in the same zoning district. And right now in Walnut Creek, that's twenty-five feet and two stories, except it sounds like in some cases it can go up to twenty-nine for a pitched roof. So, um, another area that cities do have some, just some latitude to regulate is how many parking spaces they require. State law, uh, says that you can require no more than one parking space per SB nine unit. And if you're within half, uh, mile of a major transit stop, like a Bart station, or a block of a car share station, then you can only, then you can't require any. It does not talk about whether spaces must be covered, that's kind of, that's up to jurisdictions. And the jurisdictions that we looked at, there was a range of requirements. Some of them require it to be covered, some of them don't. The interim ordinance required one space per SB nine unit, and, um, it did require it to be covered. So some basic options that were putting forward here are to keep the existing standard of one covered space, to continue to require one space, but allow it to be uncovered, and, or to not require any off-street parking for SB nine units. So one jurisdiction that I've worked with, city of Alameda, they decided to eliminate parking maximums completely, so that is an option. One, one, uh, issue with requiring covered parking is you might end up with carports, where people just put up something to meet the standard, and sometimes carports can be unsightly, so one, one thing to keep in mind. Design standards, so state law does allow cities to set objective design standards as long as they don't preclude two eight hundred square foot units. The interim ordinance carried over, um, some of the, very simple, but, but, um, but important, but cover a lot of area, uh, standards from the accessory dwelling unit regulations. They have to do with architectural compatibility, garage conversions, and what you do with the front door of a garage, how many exterior entrances you have, um, that face the street, and then, um, some standards for second-story windows to, um, to deal with privacy, potential privacy impacts on neighboring properties. The interim ordinance also refers to the objective design standards checklist, and the city's now in the process of, uh, adopt, adopting new objective design standards. So, you know, we would say, update, we'll update that reference to the new standards. The new standards will apply to SB nine units. And so our, our two basic options are keep the existing standards and update the references, or you could do something much more extensive, um, based on any design concerns that might be brought up, um, by the commissioners or the public. One thing to keep in mind is, um, we expect that a lot of SB nine development is gonna be in the back, if, if there's already an existing house. It's, a lot of the time, the infill development is gonna be behind, um, an existing house. So, keep that in mind as far as, you know, how, how visible these units will be. So then, the second big area that SB nine, um, deals with is dividing a property, dividing a single-family zone property into two. And there are certain things that are already set by state law, um, cities have to allow this. Each parcel needs to be about the same, about half the size of the, of the pre-existing parcel, no more than forty percent, uh, like a forty-sixty split, and each new parcel must be at least twelve hundred square feet. For reference, SB, uh, sorry, Walnut Creek's single-family zones start at eight thousand square foot minimum, so twelve hundred is pretty small. There's some other regulations that are already in state law, like, once a parcel's divided, it can't be divided again. The city can't require dedications of right-of-way, um, or off-site improvements, and an applicant must, um, state that they're going to reside in one of the units on one of the resulting parcels for three years. Oh, and this is, just, we borrowed it from the city of Palo Alto, um, from their lot design standards, but we just wanted to introduce, um, kind of how lots might be divided, different ways they might. So, on the left, we have a side-by-side division where, um, if you picture the street down at the bottom of all three of these, in the, in the, in the first scenario, each lot has equal frontage along the street. In the second scenario, it's called a flag lot, it's where you have, um, one lot in front of another, and then a narrow, it's called a flagpole or a panhandle, that provides access to the rear lot, from, you know, from the street to the rear lot. And then, in the third situation, you have a landlocked parcel that doesn't have any frontage along the street, but it has, uh, a private road with it, an access easy- frontage along the street, but it has a private road with it, an access easement across the front property. So just a little review before we go on to the next part. So currently, so state law doesn't really prescribe this. It says that cities can set subdivision standards, including requirements for access or frontage. And as long as they, their standards don't preclude an urban lot split or preclude the, the two eight hundred square foot units that we've been talking, that I've been talking about over and over again. So the interim ordinance adopted a minimum width for the flag pole portion of twenty-four feet. And that was based on the city's street standards. So that would be for a private street, I guess. And then some of the options that we've put are keep existing standards, adopt a more moderate width, like eighteen or twenty, or you could just not specify the width of the panhandle and default to the fire district standards. That's what some of the neighboring, your neighboring jurisdictions have done. Just leave it up to the Contra Costa Fire District and other safety and utility district standards. Very similar issue here is easements. So this is kind of going back, I'm going to go back two slides here. Do you want, it's a question of whether you want to allow the far-right scenario with an easement across the front lot. And basically, right now, the interim ordinance says you can only do that, like first you've got to try to have the twenty-four feet, and then if you can't, then you've got to have some frontage. And then if you can't do that, then you can have an easement. So the question is just, do you want to loosen that up and allow easements in all situations? A final topic is development impact fees. So SB nine doesn't really speak to this, but other sections of state law do allow the collection of development impact fees. In Walnut Creek, that's going to include traffic impact and an affordable housing in lieu fee. The interim ordinance explicitly stated that SB nine units, development of SB nine units does involve the payment of affordable housing in lieu fees and the tra, and, or any impact fees, it says, but these are the two that really come into play. So this is another place where we need to compare to ADUs because ADUs, for the most part, do not end up paying impact fees unless they're over eight hundred square feet. Correct me if I, if I, if, one of the staff, if I don't have that quite right, but, okay. So if somebody is thinking about doing a smaller unit, like seven hundred and fifty square feet, why would they do an SB nine unit and pay the development impact fee if they could do an ADU and not pay the impact fees? So we're just thinking about incentives here. So some of the, the options that we've listed are keep the existing standards, require development impact fees for SB nine units, but exempt them if they're under eight hundred square feet, or reduce or waive the inclusionary housing, that's the affordable housing in lieu fee, but leave the other development impact fees. Or you could also just reduce or waive all development impact fees for SB nine units to encourage people to build them. So what we're asking for you is to hear public comments, of course, ask us questions and then hear public comments, and then provide direction to staff on drafting a permanent set of SB nine regulations for Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. It's really complicated and you made it, you really set forth the issues very clearly and we really appreciate that. So as we just heard, now is time for commission questions with regard to the presentation. Does anybody have any questions? And just, just to remind you, this is questions, not comments. We're not going to deliberate decide, we're going to do that later. This is just questions. Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Just for clarification, when you're referring to SB nine units, you're referring to two units on one lot, not the lot split and two or four or whatever on that, just talking about for a single lot.
It could be either a single lot or a lot split. When I'm referring to SB nine units, I'm meaning two, two dwelling, two detached single family dwelling units on a single lot or a duplex on a single lot. And the reason that I'm saying SB nine units, I guess, is to distinguish them from accessory dwelling units. You can also have accessory dwelling units on your lot, but the SB nine units are primary units and they're not subject to the, the ADU regulations, they're subject to their own regulations. But the idea is that they are main units and then you can have any number of accessory dwelling units as allowed by state law. But it, it's, so I'm really referring to two-unit projects, either a duplex or two detached single family dwellings, but they're located on the same lot. But very good question.
Right, so what I'm trying to get at is if you do a lot split under SB nine, the two resulting lots, each of them, are they subject to SB nine constraints or are they just, you know, standard one-lot development?
If you'd like, I can, I can jump in on that one. Actually, the, so under our existing regulations and the zoning ordinance, the, you know, let's say you have your typical single family lot that's got a house, may or may not have ADUs, but you've got a house on it and then, and the owner does an urban lot split, the, any units built on the new vacant lot are considered SB nine units. And then the second unit built on the lot that still has the house on it would also be considered an SB nine unit under the current interim ordinance.
Which goes next to my next question, which is you have a house and you have a lot, I'm sorry, you have a lot with a house on it, reversed. You have a house with a lot on it already. It's a eighteen-hundred, two-thousand square foot house. And then you decide under SB nine to put a second unit there, not an ADU but a, a second unit. The, this, I think you just said the second unit would be considered SB nine unit, the first one, existing one, but not.
Under our current regulations, yes, that's correct.
And if you had an empty lot, build a sta, a standard unit under the standard development.
Under the current regulations, that second lot, you're only allowed.
No, no, I'm sorry, I was just, you have an empty lot, you buy a lot.
Oh.
Single lot. You, and you build a house. And then two years later, you decide you're going to add a second unit under SB nine. So you, so the first one, you wouldn't have to, you know, make that one smaller or, you know, shorter or anything like that. That's under the standard development requirements. The second unit would be under SB nine.
Correct, that's how our, yeah, that's under our current ordinance, that's defined that way. In fact, the, the existing primary dwelling is defined as a pre-SB nine unit. In the, that's how it's written.
Even if, even if it's built later.
No, the, the house, so you've got a vacant lot, you build a house under the current normal zoning regulations, just for a house, and then you add a second unit under SB nine. At that point, you have a pre-SB nine unit, which is the original house built just to normal regulations. And then the SB nine unit, which is subject to the eight hundred square foot limitation and, and the other ones that we're gone over.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lezak.
So I, I saw in the staff report that to date, there have been two applications in the city for this. My question is really about scale. You know, we're talking about an ordinance to create a whole new set of rules for what I perceive to be a likely relatively uncommon situation. And so there's been two applications in a year and a half. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
How, how many more applications do we expect in the next eight-year housing element cycle? Did we speak to this at all in the housing element? And if you know, how common is this in other cities? Are people seeing, I, I guess my, and, and I'm trying also to compare that in scale to, say, ADUs, which we did see a certain number of ADUs happen. I know it isn't a huge number, but percentage-wise, we saw a, an increase over what previously was done prior to the state law.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, let me try to remember the question. So first about, well, let me, the part that I definitely remember with regard to ADUs. We have in the city, I actually forget the exact number, but it was, it's either sixty or ninety ADUs, it's somewhere in that ballpark across the entire city. Now that is out of a total of thirty-two thousand plus dwelling units existing in the city, so it's a small amount. There is a lot of interest, the rules have been loosened by the state repeatedly, and so the, the interest is going up and up and up. We're seeing about fifteen a year now, give or take, and, but the number is going up. Of course, ADUs, they're exempt from a lot of the, in addition to zoning exemptions, they're exempt from a lot of fees, not just from the city. You know, we don't charge development impact fees for ADUs, but likewise, there's reduced fees, sometimes greatly reduced fees to, say, the water district and the sanitary district. And normally those fees on their own for a house can get up above fifty thousand dollars and actually well above that per, for a new house. And those are reduced or waived depending on the size of the ADU. So they're, it's a popular option. But it is, of course, as any homeowner knows, it, you know, trying to add a unit to a property that has a house in the middle of it is sometimes a challenging proposition, not to mention expensive, complex and difficult to live through. And those matters were actually studied by the Turner Center at UC Berkeley, where they did kind of a GIS mathematical analysis of how many properties. They looked really, I think they were looking at the entire Bay Area, but they were looking at, you know, how many properties out there could theoretically accommodate an SB nine unit? And then they looked at, okay, well, how many of those would it actually financially make sense? And then they, you know, so they went from a big number to a much smaller number, what makes financial sense to do it? And then what would actually be expected, just given, you know, homeowner behaviors and the like? And the number just gets smaller and smaller to the point where SB nine likely wouldn't have a very outsized impact on cities. You know, occasionally, you know, for somebody who's living right next door to one, they're going to see that there's another unit there. But at the citywide level, the number is, been expected to be small and we've seen it that way. And it's really not, it's not necessarily because of any actions on the part of the city, it's just the nature of construction being very expensive and difficult. And like I said, if you've got your house, it's already in the middle of a lot, where are you going to fit in a second unit? It's, can be challenging.
So if, if there were two applications to date, your opinion is that, that is fairly consistent with the rate that we might see in then over the next eight-year period? So?
I, I can't project, and, and actually, we really didn't do a projection for SB nine units in the housing element because HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which is the state agency that certifies housing elements, they basically wouldn't allow us to use SB nine units to meet our housing allocation, primarily because we don't have a track record with them because the lot didn't exist. But, you know, the, as Heather mentioned, we, you know, we've received a lot, you know, of course, when SB nine was out in the news and was a big thing all of a sudden, we did get a lot of inquiries. A lot of them were more just like, hey, is this even a possibility? Just kind of like beginning to think. Most of the time when they found out that it limited to eight hundred square feet, it was kind of a, oh, never mind. You know, how many of those people would have actually gone through all the way to construction if the floor area limit was larger? I would assume it'd probably be more than two units, but I couldn't really venture a guess as to how many more.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, I mean, just to wrap this up, the little bit at, at the moment of a tempest in a teapot, like this is not like a, like a huge, I mean, we'll hear some, some comments from the public, but there's not a ton of demand, other than the ordinance is about to expire, there's not a ton of applications coming in that we're trying to respond to.
That's correct. We've only had two applications and only one's gotten as far as basically kind of being ready to issue a building permit, other than the, the fee. In fact, one of the written comments that was submitted and was attached with the staff report packet, the, the original staff report packet, is from that applicant, speaking to the, in lieu housing fees for inclusionary units.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, there's some, if we're down here.
Bob?
Go ahead.
Okay. Vice Chair Strongman, you're up.
Speaking of financing, do we have a rule of thumb for construction costs for residential in Walnut Creek?
Oh, boy. I don't know if I want to go on record saying, it really depends a lot on the construction type, but typically, you know, SB nine units, it's going to be just standard wood frame construction. I would actually, before I venture a guess, I think there's a few other members of the commission that I would first defer to, might be able to speak to that, who are in the
I haven't built a single family house for ten years, so I have no idea. But small houses are very expensive per square foot to build. And large custom homes are in the three hundred dollar a square foot range, so.
So two hundred dollars might be reasonable?
I was gonna.
Probably not.
I was going to say four hundred dollars a square foot, but.
For a smaller unit, you're going to be higher per square foot because you've got bathrooms and kitchens, and that costs the same kind of regardless, so you're, you're up there, I'd say three hundred plus for a small unit.
So, okay, thank you. It's, listening to your presentation, which was very useful, seems to be some contradictions between the RDU laws and the SB nine laws. Are we going to try and reconcile those somehow?
Is the question, are we trying to reconcile them?
Yeah, will there be any, I mean, it seemed to be, some points might be, might be easier to do an ADU than an SB nine type thing, type.
I think we're presenting, I mean, with both ADUs and SB nine units, a lot of the standards are already set in state law. But we're presenting some contrasts here because it raises the question of, it, do, you know, if SB nine units are harder or more expensive to construct or, or have to be smaller, then it, then it kind of disincentivizes the use of SB nine. And SB nine does offer, one thing that it offers over ADUs is potential, although it sounds like constructing is not necessarily cheap, but if you were to divide a lot and, and sell part of it off, that could be a slightly more affordable homeownership opportunity because you have a smaller lot. You could also, depending on the local regulations, allow for separate sale of the two units,
Floor area limits and height limits are areas, particularly floor area limits, is an area where the, our city's SB nine regulations do not match that of the ADU regulations. So we've offered as potential options, increasing the, the floor area limit of an SB nine unit to match that of an ADU.
Okay. One, for the final question, on the staff report, page three, towards the bottom, they have about that requiring deed restrictions for affordable provisions recorded for fifty-five years. Are we trying to make sure that any SB nine unit is affordable by deed restriction?
So that, that's a program HG, I'm sorry, H six G of our adopted housing element. And it's to, it's for the city to consider allowing larger SB nine units and then permit homeowners to develop both an ADU and JADU on the SB nine urban lot splits, which would be beyond what we have to require or have to allow under state law if the homeowner is willing to put the ADU and JADU under deed restriction to make them affordable units, just like an inclusionary unit, for example.
But there's nothing in SB nine itself that says we have to have deed restrictions?
Correct.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Pickett.
Okay, one, one question, more than one question, first one question. So it sounds like, and I would believe this is the case, SB nine really is probably not going to be a significant factor in increasing our housing supply. Does that sound, based on its history of Walnut Creek with two applications and based on the fundamental geometry of a single family house sitting in the middle of a lot and trees that exist and you can't encroach, it doesn't seem to me to be a big thing. And then so that leads to a question, why do, I know we have this because somebody in the state thought we should have it. Who was that?
Well, I'll, I'll take the heat of answering the question. Well, I'll, I'll take the heat of answering the question as to, you know, how much do we expect this to impact, if you will, the city of Walnut Creek? And I think your, your observation is correct. We're not, we're not really expecting a whole lot in the way of SB nine units. A certain, you know, again, within the citywide scope of having a total of thirty-two thousand-plus dwelling units in the city, about a third of which, a little more than a third of which are single-family homes. As far as, you know, who, who, what, and why in Sacramento, that I couldn't tell you. I don't remember who the author was of the, of the bill, and I wouldn't want to speak to their motivations.
I'll look into that.
And I don't know if you're asking about also whether we need to have a local ordinance? I, I-
No, I'm not asking.
Um, okay.
I know, I know we have to.
Actually, I do want to clarify that we don't have to have a local ordinance. If you don't adopt a local ordinance, it just defaults to the standards in state law. So cities have adopted ordinances so that they can have some control over certain standards for the development. But if you, you know, you could also just, as, as an option, you could let the interim ordinance expire, and then you would just default to the standards in state law. And you wouldn't be able to regulate the areas that we mentioned. So it's an option.
So you, you mentioned, and I've heard this, so I'd like you to repeat the information on ownership, that if you do a lot split, the existing owner, the subdivider of the lot, has to maintain ownership of one of the parcels? Or can he sell both of them?
The, all they have to do is sign an affidavit stating that they intend to live in one of the units on one of the lots as their primary residence for at least three years. They don't have to retain ownership of the lots.
It's three years?
Mm-hmm.
So conceivably, somebody could do the lot split, sell off both lots, and rent back for three years, and then the new owner would take over. Okay.
Or to be cynical about it, they could also just say that they've changed their intent. Because the, the, the affidavit that's required under state law is only that they intend to live there for three years, not that they actually have to.
And, and there's nobody to go check on them anyhow?
Well, again, it's just intent, so we wouldn't enforce that.
Okay, now, you showed us some exhibits of potential lot configurations on a lot split scenario. And those looked like, I mean, there's no dimensions on those. And I think you said the smallest single-family lot we have in Walnut Creek is eight thousand square feet? All right?
Of our base zoning districts are R zones. The R eight is the second smallest with an eight thousand square foot minimum lot size. There's also the SFHPD one, which is the Single Family High Plan Development District one, which is a small district along Gary Avenue, basically, that allows, I think, down to like thirty-two hundred square feet-ish.
All right, so if we, if we took an eight thousand-foot lot, we, any exist, most of the existing eight thousand-foot lots will satisfy or meet the standards of an eight thousand-foot lot, would have minimum widths and depth requirements. So the majority of those small lots will have certain dimensions. Has anybody looked at our lot inventory and taken a look at how that would conceivably be subdivided? I mean, if you got a sixty-foot wide lot, which I think is maybe the minimum on an eight thousand-foot?
I would have to look that up.
You don't have to answer that, but I'm just going through the, the concept of this. Has anybody looked at the reality of splitting lots that actually exist in the city of Walnut Creek? With regards to homes that are on them?
Is that as an urban lot split under SB nine or just a-
Yes, as an urban, okay, so you, we have an existing R eight zone. We have existing R eight lots, and those lots meet certain standards. And has anybody looked at what we get into if we're splitting those? Because that might have some bearing on how we want to apply some standards to those splits.
Well, so SB nine has a twelve hundred square foot minimum lot area requirement. But also, when you're subdividing a lot of whatever size, it does state that you can't be more, it has to be roughly equal, so you can't be more off kilter than a sixty, forty percent split.
Yeah, so that's thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred and forty-eight hundred square feet would be kind of the maximum range of what those two lots end up being. So if you have thirty, I mean, I'm just going, I can't do the math in my head that quick anymore, but.
You're doing it better than me.
Anyhow, I, I, I just, to me, it's, it's a fundamental evaluation is how, when we're looking at how likely is it? And it has to do with what the existing inventory is, and I don't know if anybody's looked at that or not.
We, we have not conducted a specific analysis of that. Interestingly, actually, the Turner Center did, in that study that they spoke to. But that was, and I, and actually, I think that study did take into effect building footprint of existing buildings based on JS publicly available data that's sort of accurate. I will say that the, the lot dimensions are really not a concern, if you will, in terms of the subdividability, to make up a word, under SB nine. Really, I think what's more an issue, just speaking kind of real world, is the fact that all of these R eight, R ten, R twelve lots, all, you know, ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of them have a house smack in the middle of it. And if you want to add another house, you can maybe shoehorn something into the backyard or build something small, which is typically what we see in the case of ADUs, or tear down the house and start from scratch. But financially, that's not likely to make quite so much sense.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I envision in the catastrophic world is that some developer comes in and buys three or four lots together. Maybe takes him a couple of years to do that. And then he mows everything down and creates a bunch of fourplexes in that string of four lots. So you get four lots, you get sixteen, right, you get sixteen houses in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. And that, that to me is the future with SB nine, is this multiple assemblage of lots and, you know, significant redevelopment of single-family neighborhoods. Again, we can't do anything about that, but I think when we're looking at our ordinances, I want to, I'll just say that for comments. Now, we also have lot coverage ratios in our single-family zones. And would those apply to these two new lots if you, you do a split? Does that same lot coverage ratio apply to the new houses? Can it?
We can apply standards like that, but you still have to allow at least eight hundred square foot units under state law.
Yeah.
So all, basically, most, all slash most zoning requirements are waived as necessary to physically accommodate at least two eight hundred square foot units, and that's under state law.
Okay, did anybody look at that, again, in regards to the reality of Walnut Creek and zoning? And is that gonna be a factor on the eight hundred square foot unit? I mean, eight hundred square feet, I, I don't know what our lot coverage ratios are. They're different depending on the, on the zoning. But again, looking at the smallest scenario, an eight thousand-foot lot has a certain lot coverage. You split it, would any of that preclude an eight hundred square foot house?
Well, the lot coverage, if, if, if the lot was so small that the two eight hundred square foot units were to exceed the lot coverage maximum, then that lot coverage maximum is automatically waived pursuant to state law.
Okay.
And, and I do actually, just to speak to your previous question about the possibility of sites being, you know, somebody buying up multiple homes and redeveloping them, if you will. I will, I just want to make the observation that we have a number of single-family neighborhoods in the city that are actually zoned multiple-family residential and have been for several decades. And, for example, along Overlook Avenue on the other side of the freeway, over the years, we have started to see some development in those areas as per the multiple-family residential designation. But it's taken, I mean, it's taken decades for that to happen. And there's, and it's still, even there, is primarily single-family. You know, those types of changes tend to be very evolutionary just because of the realities of, you know, the financial realities of construction. And also just, you know, do the owners even want to sell?
And then while you're looking at lot coverage, I'll mention that there's, maybe the city attorney can reference the section of SB nine, because I don't have it in front of me. But there is something that, that prohibits someone, the same person, from dividing another lot adjacent or anyone acting in concert with the person who did the subdivision. But we'll have to look up the details of that.
That is addressed in SB nine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're, yeah, trying to prevent, like, speculation and promote small-scale infill development.
Okay, and how many single-family homes are in Walnut Creek?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but approximately twelve, approximately twelve thousand-ish. I can double-check.
That's close. I'll trust you. And do we know what percentage of the Walnut, of Walnut Creek live in the single-family home neighborhoods?
So, population, hmm. I can tell you that I think it's thirty-seven percent of our total dwelling units in the city are single-family detached homes. The average household size in those homes tend to be larger than the multiple families. So if our population is seventy thousand, you know, let's say there's somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand people living in single-family homes, if I had to guess.
So about half the city?
I'd say a little bit less than that. Maybe forty percent.
So SB nine and its conditions affect over half our city directly? Could, could affect our, half of our city population?
By population, I would probably, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable saying about forty percent of the population.
Now, there was a reference to major transit stations. And I know we talked about this briefly when we were looking at ADUs. And I've, I've heard this, is BART the only major transit station we have in Walnut Creek? I mean, they don't count major bus stops or anything, right?
They actually do.
They do.
But there has to be, if I remember correctly, there's multiple definitions of transit stops used in these various housing laws. And I think with this one, it's you have to have two intersecting routes that have a minimum, a, they have to have a bus on each route at least every fifteen minutes during peak hours or something like that. And that does not currently exist in Walnut Creek, has, I don't think, ever existed in Walnut Creek. And given the state of transit, at least in the nearer terms, probably not likely to happen in Walnut Creek anytime soon.
Okay, so currently, our only major transit-
The two BART stations.
BART.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other commissioner questions? Okay, great, thank you. So now it is time to open our public hearing. We have no applicant, so we are gonna go straight to public comment. I see there's someone with a hand raised, but there are also people in the chamber, so do we have?
I already have a speaker card for Douglas Witt.
All right, come on up.
Before I get going, I think the individual to answer your question, Mr. Pickett, that pushed this legislation through was a guy named Weiner or Weiner, I don't know which he prefers, San Francisco.
Thank you.
This has been very informative, I think, the commission. The, the thing that seems apparent in this is that this state law has nothing to do, at least for Walnut Creek, with increasing the amount of available housing for lower-income people. Two applications is inconsequential. And I would encourage the commission and the city to focus not so much on the global aspect of this, but on the issue of what happens to that one individual who is next to the, one of these units? Because that can be very disturbing. Consider the case of a possible twenty-five-foot limit on height, four feet from your house. That's, and without much architectural capability, without much capability to control the architectural features of that house. If there's anything I think we need to study, it's the impact on the individual. Whether it's one person, two, or five, or ten, that impact is very serious to that individual. Whereas the benefits from this legislation are minimal. It was a knee-jerk legislation package to get votes for people who allegedly think they're solving a problem. It has nothing to do with good housing. That's an opinion. Some specifics. I would encourage, as I, you probably know already, that we in no way reduce the restrictions in the interim rules or regulations that are in place right now, that in fact, I would encourage an increase in restrictions. I'm not aware of which things can and cannot be done. But for example, there's no restrictions on the width of the lot. There should be, if we can do it. It's ridiculous to say that you could divide a lot that had a sixty-foot frontage and put in something that was twenty-foot wide. And one would say, well, it's not practical, et cetera. But consider, for the moment, and consider yourselves the guy who's gonna be next to those properties if they're not constrained. The state law is poorly written. It's as simple as that. And I encourage you to do whatever you can to retain the restrictions and to consider how it would be to have one of these units going next to you in an atrocity of a construction for one person's benefit at the expense of another. I have one specific thing. There are, I'm no lawyer, by the way, but CCNRs often constrain the height or number of stories or type of buildings and use that can be used in a, constructed in a given area. Those are independent of, of, can I continue?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, your time's up, so you need to wrap it up here.
I will wrap it up. Those are independent of the regulations that the city will provide. But I would, I would like to see in the new regulations at least a mention that they have to comply with CCNRs associated with the property. That's for benefit for the applicant and for the people in, in that CCNR area.
Great, thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, I see there's somebody with their hand up online.
Yes, I will ask if any of the members of the public, I'll be bringing in Brian Walsh, actually. Let me first start doing that since Zoom is a little slow. But if any of the other members of the public wish to, who are attending via Zoom, wish to speak, please press the raise hand button. I see one hand's gone up. And let's see here, Brian Walsh is coming in. I see his mic's turned on.
Good evening. Just want to check that you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I want, first of all, I'd like to thank the commission and the staff of the city for putting together all this information. I know it's rather extensive. It is a complicated issue. And it does speak to the statewide issue relative to housing and the utilization of lots that we're familiar with, the single-family lots that have existed for close to a century. So my first point is, what is the state's intentions here? And do we believe that the state will stop where it currently has written the state laws? And my belief is that will not be the case, that they will look at jurisdictions like Walnut Creek and determine, is the city stopping or preventing the development of appropriate lots for subdevelopment or subdivision? And will they amend the law to force our jurisdictions to adopt a more lax or more relaxed ordinance? So what I would say to the commission is, the reality is that there's quite a number of lots in Walnut Creek that would be suitable for SB nine subdivision. The current disincentive is, as was spoken of earlier, is you could have a lot that is substantial enough to be subdivided and still meet the criteria of an ordinance for a home as if it were a vacant lot, but yet you're restricted to eight hundred square feet. So in that case, there's no incentive for anybody to build. And, and this is the key point. It is not developers that are going to utilize SB nine. It's individual homeowners who are taking on a project for which they have really no expertise in. And the cost associated with doing this is huge. It's hugely prohibitive to undertake subdividing a lot that you own, that you are now going to build a home on in the back of, which was, again, made in the presentation, and most of these lots- which was again made in the presentation, and most of these lots would be homes built in the back. Nobody is going to build a home in the back of their lot if it decreases the value of their existing home or makes it such that, uh, it's, it's not, it's not an attractive proposition, nor does it work for the neighborhood. Nobody's really interested in that. None of these single-family owners are interested in, in doing that. So I would urge the commission to allow the ordinance to be such that a subdivision of a lot would be then subject to the ordinance that already exists for a vacant lot and not minimize it to the restriction of eight hundred square feet. Flag lots. So we, as was talked about, most of these lots will be development in the back, if the lot is big enough, where you need an easement to be able to get through. It makes no sense to have a twenty-four-foot-wide, eh, um, requirement. It makes sense to use the Contra Costa County Fire District's, eh, code of an easement of sixteen feet because it's really only important in the event of a fire or, or some sort of an episode where an ambulance or a fire brigade needs to get back there. So why not adopt just the Contra Costa code, um, of sixteen feet?
Okay, um, hey, sir, your time is up.
Well, just one last quick point, just one last very quick point.
It's way up. I gave you extra already.
Well, just transparency about cost is all I ask, is that the city then adopt a way of making sure the homeowner knows the costs associated with upfront, so instead of having to find out too far down into the project. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, all right, see, I think we have at least one other person on Zoom here.
I am bringing in Jan Warren.
Okay.
And it looks like Jan has been brought in, but her microphone is muted at the moment.
Hey, Jan, can you please unmute yourself so we can hear you?
Got it, got it, sorry.
All right, great, thank you.
Here we go, okay, sorry about that. Uh, anyhow, um, I realize this isn't gonna solve our housing problem. However, um, you know, we need all we can get, and I do think we ought to proceed with updating the ordinance. And I think we ought to make it as flexible as we possibly can. Uh, the gentleman who sent the letter with the two small lots and so forth in the, in Lufy's, I don't know how many, um, vacant lots we have, uh, as opposed to people living on them with a house in the middle, but we must have some. And so, um, you know, I originally wanted to restrict it to, you know, bring it up to a thousand and then not necessarily just open it up at the end. But, um, you know, it's hard to know. I just think we ought to make everything as viable as possible um, for, to make it work for people. Some people would love to have their children live close to them and they, they might have money, I don't know. Uh, and, um, and yet there's no, you know, home here. There's not a lot, you know, close to them that they can afford. So for some people, you know, um, I think it, it could work. And certainly, um, we need to, to give it a, give it a try, um, and, and for the most part, just to make it flexible. Is, is I think the most general comment I would make, rather than, y'all went kind of the middle road and that's pretty good. And, um, I agree with the gentleman who just spoke about the, the fire zone. I mean, looking in my neighborhood, we've put in some nice ADUs in our neighborhood, um, but we don't have, eh, eh, enough, eh, easement. Uh, and I'm on a corner and, uh, I love my trees, so I'm not gonna be doing anything. But, um, there are people out there that, eh, you know, let's, let's open it up and let's show, uh, that, that we're trying. And, uh, if it benefits folks, it's worth the effort. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, Andy, how we doing?
Turn on my microphone here. Um, so we do have one additional attendee via Zoom. I would ask, eh, if they're interested in speaking, to please press the raise hand button. Looks like they're just watching instead, so, uh, they haven't raised their hand.
Okay, that's great. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak? All right, come on up.
Hi, my name is Said Kahangi, and I had a piece of property myself close to the Bart Station in Pleasant Hill for the last seven years. I got the approval to build a forty-five-hundred square-foot house. And then I heard about this SB fifty or SB nine coming up. So I hold on and I scratched that idea because I thought it's a really good location. It's a half a mile from the Bart. It has two, eh, entrance to two different streets, to two different cul-de-sac. I tried, eh, to this, see Walnut Creek to see if I, what can I do with it? Because I just didn't wanna, uh, split the lot or just build a one huge house on it. After going back and forth with the city on, on the twenty-twenty-one, we got to this idea that we can split it. And I said, okay, I split it in two lots and build the twenty-five, two twenty-five-hundred square-foot lot. And in the, they returned, uh, they came back to me that they said, the maximum you can build on it is sixteen hundred on each. You cannot build more than that. For the, they scratched the idea of a building, uh, four plaques or two plaques or anything in, else in there. And I tried different people and see if I can build a, a low-income housing over there because people don't need a, 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 a car or anything else. It's about half a mile. We can just walk, very pleasant, uh, walk, it's flat land to the Bart. So I understand that, uh, the number of the application being low is that nobody wanna build. It's very hard to build and it's very expensive to build unless, unless they get, they build something that the people can use. On SB nine, the requirement is, if you even may, may build the ADU, is eight hundred square foot. To build a nice place for a family of three people, husband, wife, and a kid, you need two-bedroom, two-bath, and it, that takes about nine hundred square foot to build it. When you limit that to the eight hundred, it became a one-bedroom or two, very two-small bedroom that the people, they use it for, just using for Airbnb. And instead of going after what was the intention behind the SB nine to build a low-income housing for the people to live in it. If you have a, a new, newly-vet people and they just wanna live somewhere in Walnut Creek, is the rent is three, four, five thousand dollars. And that, that doesn't make it, so I would really appreciate if City of Walnut Creek and you guys just look into it and see what you can do to build something for the low-income people. I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you very much for your comment. Andy, is there anybody else who'd like to comment?
No, there's not.
Okay, well, thank you all for the comments, and so we're gonna close the public hearing at this point. And now it's the time when we go back to the commission for comments, questions, deliberation, and the like. And it seems like we have, um, some slides that could help guide this conversation. So if we could use those to, um, direct us, I think that would be very helpful, uh, because they're already set up and ready to go. Or maybe that's optimistic, but, it's the tech, the tech always gets us. There they are, okay. So we've, uh, we've already heard public comments, um, and now it's time to provide direction, so if we can go back. And I'm not sure if we're going back to our two-unit issues or back to the overall approach and then to the two issues, so I'm not sure what.
Would you, would you like to go to the overall approach?
Um, Yeah, that seems like a, a good place to start. Um, so, uh, so this is kind of a philosophical question for us. And, you know, I don't know whether, I, I don't think it, it doesn't really lend itself to, uh, you know, eh, easy vote or, these are all kind of straw polls and comments that we're making today. Is that what I'm looking at here? Okay. Um, but generally, it's just, um, kind of the, the overarching philosophy that, that this commission would like to see driving the particular, um, implementation of the, um, ordinances that we do to try and implement SB nine generally. And so, as you can see here from these fabulous arrows that are, I don't know, I'm, it's a, so we have, eh, there's a little bit of a suggestion here, eh, as to an opinion, but, um, so we have a restrictive approach, which would be essentially just conforming to the law. You know, we're required to do that, of course, we intend to do that. Um, but, um, we can, um, if we want, just do nothing more than that. And that could include doing literally nothing, which would then give us the, uh, the minimum required by state law, but would also limit our ability to do some regulation that we would otherwise be able to do. And then the other option, of course, the more flex- oh, I see, I'm already, am I veering off? I'm about to, about to take out a bank of garbage cans here. All right. Um, the flexible approach, allowing more than the minimum, we've been given a number of suggestions, so. All right, help, help me out here. Am I flailing? I don't know, I thought I was doing okay.
Just wanted to clarify, Sun Quan Assistant Director of Community Development, um, in the adopted housing element, there is a, a program that says that the city will adopt a permanent SB nine ordinance. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the city is already committed to do this.
The do-nothing approach is off the table, people.
Yes.
Well, we're never gonna do that anyway, so.
So may I ask you a question, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Are you looking for kind of a vote for this particular question?
Yeah, so I think what staff would like is, uh, for us to make any comments we have with regard to these two approaches. And then if we can come to some sort of either consensus vote or just some sort of direction, either to say we're divided on this issue, we have, you know, most of us think one way or another, or, you know, just, just some sort of feedback in terms of this, so. Um, and I think it's smart to start with a philosophical, uh, beginning, actually.
If it, if it pleases the chair, I, I had a, just a suggestion that as we go through and, and respond with comments, I, I think that the staff has made a, a very good staff report. And there's a couple of high-level sections in here that speak to floor area ratio, uh, building height, et cetera. Probably those three or, I guess, probably four or five different items. So that in addition to this overall approach that you've identified, maybe each of us in turn could speak to each of those specific points, just so that way we, as we run the, the line here, that each of those comments kind of come out, and then we could probably try to pull together, you know, what kind of consensus we might make or not. But in that way, the staff would, you know, in a concise way, receive our comments if, if you.
Right, so, so that was my intent, to go through each of the slides on the, the categories that we were doing. I, do you, do you think we should not start with the overall philosophy, or are you saying?
Oh, no, I, I, I just was thinking that rather than go through each slide and having six of us speak on each item through the, I'm, we might just each speak on each of those items, those five or six items, instead of each of us speaking five times on each.
Oh, okay, um.
Again, it's, you are the chair, and it's up to you to decide how you would like to approach this, so.
I think it'll be easier to hold the items in our heads and in our, our discussion if we go one item at a time. And they are, they have been, um, separated out pretty nicely by staff, so I, I think that's what we're gonna do. Um, so, there you go. Um, so let's discuss the overall approach first. Um, I do appreciate, um, the, the comments, because I love, uh, I love discussion about process. It's always important to establish that first. Um, but let's, let's think about whether we, um, want to really adhere to the, the statutory requirements that have been handed to us, or whether we want to go beyond that and have some flexibility or some, um, not deviation from it, of course, but just, um, some customization perhaps to our community. And I saw Pam Needing had her hand up, uh, so let's, uh, we can start with you.
Oh, yes. I, I don't know if this is a flexible or restrictive, but I think there should be some changes to the current interim ordinance. Does that mean it's flexible? Unsure.
Okay.
Conjecture, but.
All right, and, and you'll, you'll, you'll tell us about these specifics when we get to those categories, is that?
Yes, I'm gonna wait for, till we get to that specific slide about width and
Okay.
the way you want, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But do you, so you have no opinion generally about the philosophy that we're gonna do, or you're veering towards the flexible because you, you want to? That's kind of the, the idea I'm hearing from you.
My thought is that, that objective standards usually help clarify, especially should people, should it be normal homeowners applying SB nine and not developers? If you're not a developer, having very clear-cut, this is what I need to do to get where I need to go, and I don't need to be a developer or have a real estate license, to me, that seems like the best way to go. And then there's no gray area.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, if I may, if it'll help the conversation, um, I think it's worth pointing out that our existing interim ordinance is basically about as strict as possible interstate law. And so, uh, you know, to deviate from that would most likely be more in the flexible direction because there's not much more that we can do to really kind of ratchet it down further.
Okay, that is very helpful. Um, would anyone else like to make an overall philosophical comment with regard to our overall approach?
I, I'll jump in and I'd say, I, the current ordinance is very restrictive. And I think we'd get a little bit more flexibility on that, not open the floodgates, but less restrictive.
Okay, great, and, uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I've been, I've been thinking about this a little bit longer than others since, um, some time ago when my son was starting to move back in. We looked at an ADU as an alternative, keep him out of the house at least. And, and we have, I suspect, it's probably kind of typical eight-thousand-square-foot lot with a house in the middle of it. And what we learned was that if we wanted to build anything more than about three hundred square feet, it was gonna pretty much destroy the, the, the whole situation. So I, I don't think that, um, with, with those typical lots, you're going to get more than a couple a year, um, if that. Coming in to these things. Uh, on the other hand, there's a certain percentage, I don't know what it is, that, that are more than that. They're twelve thousand square feet or half an acre, maybe some larger than that. And that's where I think, you know, something useful could happen as far as providing additional locations for homes, additional, um, uh, perhaps smaller than the typical homes in those areas. And in those, in, with, with larger lots where this, I think, actually has a potential, it's, it makes more sense to me to allow for, um, a larger unit, to allow for, you know, more flexibility in how those things are arranged. Um, so rather than kind of focusing on, um, the smaller, the typical lots in town, which I think are not, as was pointed out by a couple of the speakers, not really gonna accomplish much, uh, to really focus more on, when you do have the room to do something useful, um, how can you go about it? Uh, to actually provide, um, you know, a two-bedroom, for example, or a, or a smaller, uh, unit in those places. So I would go for a flexible approach.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, SB nine, SB nine is kind of a misguided attempt to solve our housing problem. It's not a solution to the housing problem, and I, I think, as was mentioned by one of our speakers, we really should be focusing on the impacts to our single-family neighborhoods and to the individuals that are adjacent to a lot that might be subdivided. You know, there's an overarching, um, concept in our general plan about, you know, preserving and protecting neighborhoods. And I did talk to Andy about this, the words, those exact words are not in there, but if you, there's a lot of, and I'm not gonna go cite all of them, but there's a lot of comments in our general plan that refer to our single-family neighborhoods and maintaining them. And I think this is contradictory to that. As a result, I think in, you know, in respect to the residents of Walnut Creek who have a property, they bought a single-family home, to do this is taking that away from them. And I think that our efforts ought to be to protect those people from a, you know, draconian state law. I think that our current interim ordinance, I'm, I'm, try to figure out, I'm on the restrictive side, right? I have to use that word. Um, so, I mean, our, our, if I was to do anything, I would take our current interim ordinance and figure out what else we could add to it to make it more restrictive. We aren't, the total, total number of units generated by SB nine in a, in a flexible thing or restrictive thing are not gonna be significant. But we gotta think about those three houses that are adjacent to the one guy who wants to go in and jam something in there that it wasn't intended to. So I'm on the restrictive side, and as we go through all the little things we have to talk about, that's, that's the side I'm gonna fall on on those.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Lezak?
So I'm gonna end up being a little bit in the hybrid.
So I'm gonna end up being a little bit in the hybrid model here, and that is to say that, um, SB nine is a state law and it's probably not going away. And we do want to encourage more housing, I'm a housing guy, I wanna see really good ways to build more housing. But I, I do agree that this law has the potential, um, to, you know, to be a problem for existing homeowners who moved into a place with an expectation of, of a certain zoning and, and a certain rights. So there's, I'm thinking that there's some balance where that we can provide some flexibility, maybe a little bit of way, what Pam was channeling about ways to use, you know, the current zoning, uh, you know, ordinances, the current objective standards for certain conditions. And then outside of that, there's certain areas that we would wanna be restrictive, particularly as we're getting a, a close to other, other homes. So I, I probably end up being in the flexible category because I'm wanting something that's a little bit more hybrid and not as restrictive as where Bob is, and not the same law that we've, not ordinance we've got now. But I think we need to kind of carefully craft each of these things, um, so that it considers both, both sides of this. We're really trying to, to in, offer the opportunity in the right way for this law to provide a little bit of housing, and at the same time, protect people. So that, that's sort of my thoughts that'll come out as we go, thank you.
Great, all right, well, I too am a housing, a housing guy, and I, um, um, also think that we need some flexibility, but need to be protective and mindful of existing residents. And so I think when we're looking at very, very large lots, um, that really are what this law was aimed at, and we have a bunch of those in Walnut Creek, um, then I think, being our, you know, kind of restricting it to a, but very small, um, home doesn't make sense in that context. And so a one size fits all approach is not appropriate, in my opinion. And I guess that makes me flexible or perhaps hybrid, uh, which I guess is very fashionable these days, so. All right, so I think we've all given our opinion, and I think this particular question's not really conducive to an up-down vote of any type, so I think you've gotten our comments. So why don't we move on to some of this more specific issues so that we can give you some input on those? Because I think those are, um, in some cases, lovely multiple choice questions that we can, uh, we can actually deal with here. So I see the first one is floor area, um, and so we can, we can read this, but as we know, state law, um, where we can't restrict beyond allowing two eight hundred square foot units, and that's what our, um, our interim ordinance caps at that size. So our options, as they have, um, very kindly been put, um, before us, are to keep the existing standards, to set a higher limit, such as the thousand or twelve hundred square foot that could possibly be pegged to be comparable to the ADU, um, ordinance that does allow, um, some larger limits in that range. Or, um, to be, um, to have a, a third choice, which would be to allow SB nine units to be the same size as other buildings that are permitted or allowed in a particular scenario. And, um, then, of course, we can start mixing and matching, uh, as, as we want. But, um, uh, and the example given is letting size limitations apply only to the secondary dwelling that is, um, that is put on a lot, so, um, so that's what we got. So anybody, would anybody like to?
Can I ask for a point of clarification from the staff? Although state law says it must allow, you know, two eight hundred square foot units, but in actual fact, as we were discussing earlier, uh, you could put up one unit anyway, regardless of SB nine, and then put up a second unit, or perhaps even concurrently, put up a second unit under SB nine. So it really doesn't restrict, I don't think, SB nine doesn't really restrict, even at the most restrictive, uh, point, to two eight hundred square foot units, or am I wrong?
It's really a matter of timing, um, you know, if you just have, let's say you have a vacant lot, you build a house on that lot, and it's just, there's, there's no floor area requirement or limitation, this, other than, you know, setbacks and lot coverage and the like. Because at that point, it's just regular old single family. Then, if you want to, after that's been built, if you want to add an SB nine unit, at that point, those additional units, whether it be through a urban lot split or just, you know, adding a second unit on your, onto that property, those additional units are subject to whatever floor area limitations we put in place, currently eight hundred square feet. If you have a vacant lot and you do an urban lot split and subdivide it, and now you have two vacant parcels, at that point, anything that gets built on those parcels is subject to the eight hundred square foot limit. And that's why, uh, that's actually the reason for the variation recommendation or preliminary recommendation, um, is because, uh, because of that situation, you know, we asked the, the commission to consider the possibility of maybe allowing that first home on both lots to be some larger size, um, and then having the smaller limit for the second homes.
And is that, um, the, that's, so the variation you're talking about would, would encompass that? And, you know, when we look at the higher limits, I mean, it's still, all these setbacks and other requirements are being taken into account with regard to the lot size, so there's already a limit in place with regard to that. It's just whether we're arbitrarily, uh, capping it at eight hundred square feet or some other amount. Okay, all right, other comments on this? No?
My personal comment is eight hundred square feet is awfully small.
It's very small.
We need to allow it something larger.
All right, so, um, I guess we can kind of do a little straw poll down the, down the road. I'm, I mean, I, um, unless you have a better idea.
I, I will say that this is probably the, the most important question that we're gonna have for you tonight, is the question of floor area. This is the one that's the most limiting under our current regulations. It's the one that most of the people inquiring about SB nine units have butted up into, I would say. So I, if, if you were to give us direction on anything, we would ask that this be it.
I have a question, is it possible to have a sliding scale on the size?
Absolutely.
Based on the lot that's being, okay.
And I, I believe some of the other, um, ordinances that you gave us as examples did have, did have that, is that correct?
Yes, yes, basically, the, 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 the only requirements that we have under state law is that, you know, there's the eight hundred square foot minimum, and that whatever standard we have be an objective standard. So, you know, if there's a, if it's gonna be a sliding scale, it's just, you know, it's a scale that you can do the math, and here's your number, uh, it's not something that's, you know, subjective, um, whether it be by commission or staff.
Okay, so I, um, I'm in favor of the sliding scale that some of the other municipalities have used that we were looking at, because I think that does, um, take into account the size of the lot in question, and doesn't treat every lot as if it were the tiniest possible area. And I'm very mindful of people next door, but I think that that scale, that sliding scale could, could, um, take that into account, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Let me throw a little complexity into it, just.
Yes, please.
For fun. And it really comes up in a later item, but, uh, I, I think that, you know, if we, we do something with a thousand or twelve hundred square foot, um, as the, the standard, one of the problems with the eight hundred square foot or anything smaller is the fees. You know, because you're, you're already just way over, your budget was to pay the fees. But, uh, I think when we get there, uh, some arrangement where if it is eight hundred square feet or less, then, you know, you forgive the fees as you would with an ADU. It makes a lot of sense, we don't have to be competing with each other. And, uh, you know, and that maybe you, uh, exempt the larger ones only from the inclusionary fee.
Right.
Simply because you, you are actually providing more affordable housing than you would otherwise. So, um, uh, I think with, with that kind of consideration as well, as to how the fees work out, I would say, you know, go for a, a larger one. As I say, simply because on your, your typical smaller lots, it's, it's really gonna be very difficult for many people to be able to fit much onto the lot. As far as the privacy of the nearby folks, um, that can be addressed, again, with a later item on height. You know, just that, uh, if you're gonna build, I think one of the options was, you gotta build close to the edge, you know, put a second story on.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sticking with my eight hundred square feet.
No, I appreciate that, I, it's like, it's clear.
You can hear me say that every time, but I, I am, uh, open-minded about a sliding scale, and we'll see what comes back. And I, I did, just did some quick math, uh, an eight hundred square foot unit on an eight thousand square foot lot is obviously ten percent. I don't think it should be ten percent across the board. You get a twenty thousand foot lot, you're putting a two thousand foot second unit on there, so. I think if we do consider a sliding scale, it needs to be conservative as, as it ratchets up with the lot size. But eight hundred square feet, but open, open mind here.
So I, I think it's im- important to not try to deviate just because of this from the general zoning standards of all of these districts. Like, we all have these standards, they're in place, they're consistent for all the folks who live there, and there are things that, you know, if I'm looking at that, uh, I have an expectation that that's gonna be in my neighborhood, and if I'm gonna design even under this law, I think that should still be the overarching guideline, is the existing zoning standards. That would mean lot coverage, that would mean setbacks, all of the above. And within that framework, I would say that we should allow these units to be same size as any other building. And what I mean by that is that if you're gonna build two of these, and you can fit on the configuration of your lot two fifteen hundred square foot homes, and meet all of the lot coverage requirements, and meet the, the setback requirements and et cetera, then I think the flexibility should allow that. Without dictating that one can only be this and one could, I think that that's, just should be allowed. And that what you probably find is that if you build one of them bigger, at some point, one of them is gonna end up being the eight hun- is gonna then have, be less than probably eight, less than eight hundred from a lot coverage perspective. And then they're gonna play the, oh, you have to let me play eight hundred square feet, because that's the law. And then you're back to Bob's eight hundred square foot unit. But you give the, you give them the choice, the flexibility, by allowing them to do it as long as they're still within the box of the zoning. And where I would be protective of folks who wanna be outside of the box of that gets into some of these other things when we get to building height and some of these other standards, which we'll talk about. But at least within floor area, I'm kind of sticking to, there, there isn't a limitation as long as you're within the box of the, the zoning standard.
Great, Pam?
Um, I've been looking at the floor area, but in conjunction with height and maximum lot coverage, so it's kind of a math exercise, if you, if you just bear with me for a second. So first of all, I was taking a look at what are the typical sizes we have? We have R eight, R ten, R twelve. I was thinking if we use the maximum lot coverage, right, for R eight, let's just say that, eight thousand square foot lot is typically an eighty by a hundred. And the zoning code actually requires that the minimum width is seventy-five feet. But for now, let's just call it eighty by a hundred. So if you do that, and you say, okay, I'm gonna do forty percent to the other house, right? So that's your thirty-two hundred square foot lot. That thirty-two square, thirty-two hundred square foot lot, if you do forty percent coverage, that's roughly a one thousand two hundred and eighty square foot house. And we, we build, um, a lot of, uh, single family detached affordable housing, and what we do is the lot, the size of the house is, to be comfortable on the first floor is typically twenty-five feet. You don't wanna go anything that's smaller than twenty-five feet in width, and then it's fifty feet deep. And guess what that amounts to? Pretty much the tw- the twelve hundred, the one thousand two hundred and eighty. So then I was thinking to myself, okay, Bob, right, what if we go back to a smaller lot? So what, so then you work backwards and say, okay, what about an eight hundred square foot? If we're talking about a sliding scale, so I did backwards, I said eight hundred, the forty percent, and then I backtracked it to the original, so for, so that would be a fi- hopefully everyone's following me. So say that we had a five thousand square foot lot, which, by the way, eight thousand square foot lots are big. So now I'm talking, now I'm thinking Dublin, huge, huge, um, population there, they're going like crazy, and they have those typical five thousand square foot lots, so the fifty by a hundred. So if you do that, five thousand, you apply your same lot cover, so you apply the forty percent, so I split it forty percent in that forty percent lot, I do forty percent lot coverage, Bob, you get your eight hundred square foot lot. So it's that same sliding scale, already using the maximum lot coverage of the smallest here, which is the R eight at forty percent. Because what I, I, what I wanna make sure to do is not have something that frankly just, no one is gonna wanna build. Because I feel like if I, I have, if, if you had an eight thousand square foot lot, maybe a twelve, a twelve hundred, or in this case, one thousand two hundred and eighty square foot house may not feel as congested as if, you know, then, then the person, then if you had like a five thousand square foot lot, which is also a very standard. So that was my first thought about floor area and the sliding scale while using the objective coverage standards that we're using here, and also applying that forty percent minimum that the state law requires for the subdividing. So that was kind of my, my thought for how to, how to apply.
Okay, I think that's very helpful, I really appreciate that.
Could I review the math?
Go ahead, yeah.
I have it, okay, I, I can do it again.
Let me try.
Okay.
So we've got an eight thousand square foot lot, and forty percent coverage is allowed.
So you take eight thousand square feet?
That's right, I can do it in my head.
Okay, attorney.
Eight thousand square foot lot, and forty percent is allowed, like you're saying.
Coverage per the code.
Okay, so that's thirty-two hundred square feet.
Forty percent is what the state law requires, right, for that minimum? Right, Andy, did I get that right?
No, it's forty percent of the total lot.
The, the total, yeah, forty-sixty, right.
Fifty-fifty or forty-sixty?
She did the lot split version?
I did the splot- lot split version. So I, that, 'cause I, what, what we're trying to fig- what I was trying to figure out was, how do we wanna look at the house on the lot that has the lot split? And if that lot, the split lot, is forty percent of the original. Oh, sorry about that. So that was my thought, is if you're doing the forty-sixty for that lot split. Exactly, so then you take that thirty-two hundred and apply the same objective standard of the forty percent, that equates to a roughly one thousand two hundred and eighty square foot lot, pardon me, square foot home.
No, it's, that's a footprint.
A footprint.
So it could be twenty-four, it could be twenty-five hundred and sixty square foot.
Well, we haven't talked about second stories, that's the second thing that we're, and when, once the Chair takes us to the second story.
Okay, so, um, it feels like we've discussed floor area individually and collectively here, so do you have the information you need from us?
I believe so, we do have something, we can move forward with, come back with a suggestion.
All right, so let's move on to building height then, which I believe is the next slide. Oh my gosh, all right, we're, we're going, we're going off the rails again here. Okay, so, um, as the slide says, state, state law currently says that, um, the height limits can't physically preclude having the two eight hundred square foot units on, and that the interim ordinance limits the height limit to sixteen feet. So the options we're being presented here, keep the existing standards or limit the height to sixteen to eighteen feet, which is the same as detached ADUs. And then the second option would be it depends on the setback. And if it meets normal setbacks, then it could be twenty-five feet, or, which is two stories. Or if it has a reduced, using the reduced setback, um, then the height limit would be the same for the detached ADUs, sixteen to eighteen feet. And then our third choice, um, same height as any other buildings in the same zoning. In most cases, that is twenty-five feet and two stories. So, um, let's talk about this, uh, keeping in mind that people go, even though things are zoned for two stories, our experience has been that if people don't know that, and they've been used to one-story houses in their neighborhoods, they go wild when we, uh, when we say, hey, but it was always zoned that way. You know, as one who was, been the, had people actually stand up in these chambers, shout and shake their fist at me for that particular issue, I can, I can. I can, I can attest to that, so. So let's, uh, let's talk about it. Well, I won't, I won't start this time, I'll, just whoever wants to start. All right, excellent.
Okay. So I, I hear everyone about, um, you purchased a home and everyone around you has one story and the thought of having a four foot interior side yard setback. So with that in mind, here's what I was also thinking to myself is, typically speaking, if you look at the code, the shortest setbacks are not rear, they're actually side. Okay, so with that in mind, I was thinking to myself, what is the, how often would it be where you actually have two side by sides? And Andy, there was this great slide that showed side by side, then the flag. I don't know if we can. And, and I wanted to bring something up. So in my mind, I was thinking, what is the probability as we're looking at maximum heights of the houses being side by side? So here was my thought, was I don't think that people are going to tear down existing homes in order to do this. So if you use that in mind, pardon me? Oh, you will? Okay, there you go. I don't have as much money as you then.
I think people will.
Um, okay, so my thought was, how often would you have a side by side if there's already an existing home? If there's already an existing home and let's take that eight thousand square foot lot. An eight thousand square foot lot, let's just say it's seventy five or eighty by a hundred, has a fifteen foot aggregate for side. And if the garage, so if you have twenty five feet plus the garage, plus the house footprint for these ranch homes, which is architecturally speaking in Walnut Creek, very prevalent, you have the thirty. So really you have, you don't actually have the ability to have this lot, that side by side. That was my first thought about what is out there architecturally and how the homes are built and what the current aggregate side by side is. So the only other thing that I was thinking, uh, that folks will be able to do if you have a five foot, if you have the fifteen foot aggregate, then you have the five and the ten, is really this flag lot or flag lot with easement, which really puts the homes, should someone do that, in the back. So that was my thought about, um, that to me makes me feel a lot better. Because if it's in the backyard, then the home would not be so overarching or imposing or just on top of the side neighbors. Because we would like to get, I mean, at least I would like to keep that type of specialness, that's not even a word, but, you know, in Walnut Creek, especially if you're thinking you're buying a, a single family home. So my thought, Chair, was if typically the home is in the back or maybe this is a condition that we set for when the home is particularly in the back, then perhaps there could be a higher height limit, um, for, um, but while maintaining the same amount of setbacks as the front house. So that way you're still using the objective standards for the aggregate of the side yard setbacks. Should the home be in the back, so you still have that privacy in the side to side. So that was my first.
Great, all right, thank you. We come back this way.
Uh, I think I'm in the similar camp in a different way. And that is, I'm hybrid and I'm going to go with the, it depends on the setback B selection here. And that is, if you're within the box of the zoning requirements, you're within the setbacks, then I think it's acceptable to have the house be taller. Because whether they knew they were in a, in a, in that zone or not, that was the zone, that was the expectation, I think that's fine. If you want to go outside of the setbacks that are allowed, we should allow you to do that. But the price of doing that would be to, to have the smaller, the, the, the lower building height. And that provides some protection to neighbors who wouldn't necessarily have thought that, that we're in that zone. And really, that's only because it's consistent with the ADU law. They were going to do an ADU, they could have done the same thing. So that's why I'm in the B camp.
Great, okay, thank you. Bob?
So a question of staff, the, when you do this, isn't, wasn't there some provision in SB nine that says you have to relax the existing zoning ordinances if they prevent you from being able to kind of do what you want to do there?
So, uh, they, they, uh, the state law requ- only allows the city to require up to a four foot interior side and rear setback. So, I mean, we have to allow SB nine units to get to within four feet of the side of rear. But we do have the ability to, to, as what Commissioner Lezak had suggested, say that if you're going to go closer than the regular city setbacks that apply to the main house, we limit you to one, one story in height. That is an option that's available under state law.
Okay, and when you say one story height, does that have a, a footage? I mean, if you go with a one story, you go with an eight, twelve and twelve pitch, you got a taller house than.
So, so that can be, of course, that also could be something that the city can establish, uh, criteria for. Um, I will say that our height, the way our height limits are measured is, um, that you're basically allowed, uh, and this is for any building, you're allowed up to an additional four feet if you have a roof pitch of more than three and twelve. But only that additional four feet. So, for example, in a vast majority of our single family zones, there's a twenty five foot height limit. But for at least a three and twelve roof pitch covering seventy five percent of the horizontal area of the, of the building, you can go up to twenty nine feet.
Okay, so another question, many years ago, we adopted a mega home ordinance. I don't, I don't know what we called it, but it was.
Oversized home.
Oversized home ordinance in response to issues, exactly what we're talking about here and exactly the risk that SB nine, you know, places on our neighborhoods. Is that ordinance still in place?
Uh, yeah, that, that is still on the books. And what that, effectively what that requires is, um, well, there's a nu- so it used to be we didn't require designer review for single family homes. And that ordinance put into place thresholds for when designer review does apply to single family homes. And I'm assuming what you're probably most interested in is the floor area threshold, which is forty five hundred square feet of gross floor area on the entire property. So that would include detached garages, barns, anything. Once you exceed, and SB nine's not subject to this because we can't do designer review, but, um, for regular, you know, regular homes, uh, once you exceed forty five hundred square feet of gross floor area, that triggers a designer review requirement with, you know, various findings and guidelines.
Okay, so obviously forty five hundred square feet is unlikely in the scenarios we're talking about. But one point would be that the concept, which was a big issue in the city of Walnut Creek ten, fifteen years ago, still exists today. So I, I guess on this one too, I'm going to lean towards the, the minimum. But I will also remain open minded on a scenario where maybe we, like Peter was suggesting, if you're in the setbacks that are set for that zoning, and I, I think it's going to be real hard to do that on the smaller lots, to stay in the setbacks and even build a house. And then, then you get the deal where, well, you can't build an eight hundred square foot house because you, by the time you put setbacks in there, you don't have any room left. So then we're required to relax the setbacks. So that, that may not even be implementable if someone says, hey, I can't build anything because of your setback requirements. But I'd like to see what staff comes up with on that. But I, I think, again, my, my deal is protecting what people bought, what people paid for and where they plan to make, make their home for a long period of time. Unless they choose to move out of California, which I'm seeing why some people are.
Okay.
So I don't know if, if it's possible to do it this way, but one, one thought would be to, uh, if you, if your unit extends to the smaller setback, to the four foot setback or inside the standard setbacks, um, that you can, that you might still be able to have a second story. If one, um, not having a second story would preclude the, the application of SB nine. And two, uh, that that second story would, the second story would be within the standard setbacks. So that even if the first story of the home uses the, the reduced setbacks, the second story would be set back from that. So there's, it's not, you know, towering over the neighbor's yard or whatever. I think that may be one way to address the, the viability question. But, um, I think to the extent that, that even keeping it as a single story only option, to the extent that it does not preclude, uh, putting a unit in there, um, that's also, you know, this is going to create denser housing. And so that's already, that's, that's something of an imposition on neighbors. So to the extent that we can avoid putting a second story or at the very least, keep it away from the, the edge, uh, I'd go for that.
Not to repeat everybody, I'll go for option B.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think that building height and setback are really combined, you know, that's a very important combination in, in that analysis. And I, uh, don't think we should be allowing anything two story that is with the, you know, in a reduced setback to the extent we can possibly do that. Because I think it has a terrible impact on the, on the neighbors. Um, you know, I'm much less concerned if it meets the twenty five foot zoned setback. And at that point, I think we can be much more generous with that in terms of the height limits of the, the main house particularly. So I'm a B person as well. And, you know, I, I, I think it really meets the limits. Uh, it, it, it does the best we can to try and allow the house to be built, but still respect the character and, um, history of the neighborhood and respect people's, um, existing, uh, homes that they live in next door, which I think is very important. Um, I wouldn't really be in favor of even allowing a second story that was further setback so that you still had two stories, but it, um, you know, the second story was smaller. Uh, because I think the bulk of that structure is still imposing and still takes up so much space on the lot that it visually feels like much more of an imposition than, um, than not. So I don't think that really solves the problem when, um, when we're talking about very small lots with neighbors on, on the sides.
So I think if I were to take all the comments and average them out, I think where we're kind of falling is that if the SB nine unit complies with the normal setback requirements, they can do, you know, the same, the normal two story height limit. But if the unit goes into those normal setbacks, takes advantage of the reductions that's allowed by state law, that it's then held to the single story height limit.
I think that's pretty accurate. Okay, great, we're doing good, let's keep moving here. Let's move on to parking requirements. Okay, so state law, no, no more than one parking space required, um, for SB nine unit. Uh, no parking required within half a mile of a major transit stop, um, which in our case is only the two BART stations. Interim ordinance, one covered parking space per unit, no spaces within half mile of BART station. So I don't think, I'm personally in favor of keeping the no spaces within half mile of BART station. Uh, there aren't that many buildable places around those BART stations anyway, so I think.
And, and state law requires us to, or I should say, state law does not allow us to require parking within a half mile of BART.
We don't need to discuss that any further. Um, so our options, keep the existing standards as they are, um, require one parking space per SB nine unit or, and allow the space to be uncovered or do not require off street parking at all. The, what is Alameda, the Alameda approach, um, or option C for SB nine units. So, uh, there we have it. Okay, any thoughts? I, it's kind of a question of covered space versus not covered space or eliminating an entire.
I'll start in this direction this time.
Great.
I'll go with option A, keep the existing standards, one parking, one covered parking space per unit.
Just, just to be different.
A robust discussion.
I would suggest one covered, one uncovered. Uh, the reason being that if the second unit is in the back, which is, you're kind of presuming in most cases, requiring that unit to have a garage or a carport or something, I think having a short driveway, perhaps they park near the street but not on it, would be, would be acceptable. Again, just to keep the, the cost of what we hope is going to be a more portable unit down. I, I think at least an uncovered spot is necessary because people are going to have cars, no matter how small the unit is.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may ask for clarification from Commissioner Anderson, are you, uh, speaking of having two parking spaces per SB nine unit? Because that's actually not allowed.
No, one per unit.
But if you have two SB nine units on a property.
The main one covered.
Gotcha.
The, the one for the smaller unit in the back uncovered.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Pickett?
I am, I guess I'm a B on this one. It was pointed out that a lot of what would be qualify as a covered parking space can be really ugly. And I think that we might be better off having a car sitting outside that's about four and a half feet high than something like our pretty picture here with, something with lattice work and something that I would build to cup, to qualify as a covered deal. So I'd go with, still require the parking space, but let it be uncovered.
Okay, great. Commissioner Lezak?
I'm in the same camp and my, my thought process is actually slightly different. And that is a little bit about lot coverage. I like to encourage the lot coverage to be more towards the, the structure so that folks can have more livable space and, you know, less space for the cars themselves. Um, if, if you're building a home and you're going to live in it or rent it out, there is a value to having a covered space that is an enclosed garage that people can have storage in. And, you know, that's a choice of giving up that covered space for lot coverage for that as opposed to living square footage. I think for flexibility's sake, probably encourage people to, to have a covered, enclosed, single car garage, because I think that's better than just having the car out. But I think I would, that's a choice and to be as flexible and hybrid as possible, I'll still go with the one space that's uncovered as the requirement.
Great, thank you. Mr. Nading?
Andy, are there limitations to curb cuts, how wide they are?
Yes, there are. Couldn't tell you off the top of my head the exact dimension, but our traffic engineering division does have some standards for maximum curb cut width.
So if you had a flag lot situation, because that's what we're saying, that most of them are probably going to be in the back, could, could the curb, and there's house in the back, the curb cut could be widened?
Up to a certain point, I'm, I don't remember, I kind of want to say that the maximum width for, in the single family is somewhere in the twenty five to thirty foot range. And, and of course, I happened to tell, uh, our supervisor of current engineering that she didn't need to come tonight, so.
If it was a flag lot, there could be an additional one to the, to the side of it, another little mini curb, curb cut.
I believe so, yeah.
In that case, I would say the same thing, require one parking space per SB nine unit, but allow the space to be uncovered.
Excellent. I'm a B person as well, so we seem to have some consensus on this particular issue.
Yes, we do.
So that's, that's nice. Okay, great, good job, people. Let's move on to design standards. So state law, objective design standards are allowed, but can't physically preclude at least two eight hundred square foot units. Our interim ordinance is the same as the ADU standards and also refers to the objective design standards checklist that we have. So our options are to keep the existing standards with minor clarifications to be determined later, apparently, and to refer to the new objective design standards that are developed. Or to expand the design standards to address any concerns raised by the planning commission or the public. So I'm a little confused about our options here, so maybe Andy, you can help me out here.
I actually would want to open by just saying that, uh, I actually would want to open by just saying that staff's recommendation would be to keep the existing design standards that we have in place, which match the ADU standards. You know, they, they, they seem like a good fit, they've, they've worked. And honestly, we can't really think of anything else to recommend beyond them. I guess if the, the only, you know, if the commission were to think that the existing standards are too strict, maybe you could back off from, from what's in place. But this is one where we would recommend, just to keep the status quo.
Okay, well, I'm willing to go on record saying I'm an A person then, and I would like to, my opinion would be to go along with that staff recommendation. So we can go down the line here, if anyone has a particular way they would want them to be changed or loosened up, but.
My, my only concern on that is that we have some unique neighborhoods, particularly the Eichler neighborhood, that I wouldn't want something out of place if they did something. Specific standards for them or something like that, that's my only concern.
Palo Alto had Eichler standards.
Yeah, they did.
So maybe we could look at that for some guidance.
I, I would, just to, to add to the conversation with regard to that, is that we do not have any, you know, neighborhood-specific design standards, or, or even just architectural style standards for anything else in the city, any other residential development. So it would only, if this were to be put in place, it would only be applicable to SB nine units, not to ADUs, not to additions to the homes, not to any of the rest of that. So just for your consideration.
Okay.
I'll start by saying, objective design standard sounds a bit like an oxymoron to me. And, and I'm, I'll, since SB nine does not allow design review, who decides whether the objective standard has been met?
No, that's actually a conversation that's occurring right now, in general, at the council level, with regard to the future role of the design review commission. You know, some, there are some jurisdictions that require a commission or a board or committee to make the determination, while there are others that, you know, it's done at staff level. For something like, certainly for something like the SB nine, you know, we don't have the option under state law of having a, a public meeting or a public hearing. So that really kind of limits us, frankly, just to staff. And, you know, obviously I have, perhaps I have a certain bias, but even if we were allowed to have a meeting, I think I would still recommend that that determination be kept at the staff level. The actual adoption of the objective standards themselves, however, that would, certainly would be something that, and which is currently happening for residential uses, that that standards be established at a commission level where the design professionals are.
And you're confident as staff that the design standard, the objective design standard that the ADUs have been using would be workable?
Yes, actually, and, and as, as Chair Ward mentioned, you know, the, the with minor clarifications, that's, there is some, it's spelled out in the staff report, but there is some language that we actually would like to kind of tighten down, both in the ADU regulations and in the SB nine, particularly with regard to, I think it says roof form, that you have matching roof form if you have a, a unit attached to the main house. And, you know, that, that, that's, I would say, a little bit open to interpretation, so we would like to, you know, match that, or state that to clarify it in a way that it is more objective, you know, it's specific roof pitch, or maybe materials, you know, things of that nature, or, you know, if it, if you have a gable roof, you'd, you'd match with a gable roof, or a hip, or, you know, whatever.
So I would say, as long as staff's going to have to deal with it, I'm, I'm for A, that's fine.
There we go.
Yeah, I'd, I'd go along with A. When I'd like to see more restrictions, but I really don't have any suggestions on that. And other than staff reviewing and making things more objective, so I'm, I'm an A on this one.
I am too, and, and the reason is, I'd like to try to keep this as simple and uniform as possible. And since we established earlier that there's probably only a handful of these, to try and create a lot of new and different guidelines just for this, really doesn't make practical sense for our staff and for folks who are already struggling to try and, you know, figure out how this all works. So, you know, the consistency would be, I think, really good to keep here. Thank you.
A.
All right, thank you. All right, again, I think we've got some good info for you there, so appreciate that. Okay, so now I think we're moving on, okay, great, to the urban lot split situation with minimum lot width and frontage. So current state law, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this really is a question of how wide does the flagpole have to be.
Okay, all right, well, let's not get crazy then. You know, I, I, I think that the fire district has a lot to say about, about this personally, so that's kind of where I fall on this, because that's our biggest concern really, is safety. Anybody else chime in? Start with you, Vice Chair Strongman, and we'll go down the road.
Let the fire district determine it.
Agreed, yes. Agreed.
Yeah, I also agree. I actually am fine with the easement concept, but again, you still need to meet a minimum fire district requirement. Thank you.
Same.
Okay, see, that wasn't so hard.
That's great.
Look at us. Okay, and then I think our second to last slide before the really exciting one, access easements.
Yeah, so this is really a question about if you have a flag lot, does that flagpole have to be, you know, fee simple, you know, the, the, the flag owner owns the, the title, or is it just an easement? I'm, I'm not entirely sure why we drew a distinction in our current SB, in the current urgency ordinance. You know, state law allows us to do whatever we want in this case, basically. And I did talk with Public Works beforehand and confirmed that regular subdivisions, we allow access via an easement or, or fee simple, so our recommendation is just to allow either.
Yeah, I would agree, they're both enforceable property interests, so I don't really have much to say about that. And we'll, we'll go down the road again. Commissioner, Vice Chair Strongman, you're, we're just gonna.
Let you.
Okay, we're gonna skip around and make it hard, okay?
Yeah. No, I was just going to say that, that allowing an easement also gives more flexibility. That's how that 40-60 split might be made, so.
Go back and say, I don't care for easements, having litigated enough of them.
Well, yeah.
Is, is, okay, so, so you say no to easements?
Prefer not easements, yes.
That's a tough one. I, I would say I would prefer no easement also, but it's like a 49-51 preference, so it's, it's not a, you, you, both of them have problems, and both of them are solutions, so I'm on the fence.
Well, and I think I already stated that I'm okay with the easement. I would tend to agree with the others in the commission that an easement is not probably a preferred situation, but I'd like to fall back to this as the minimum requirement, so that in the event that somebody needed to make that happen, to make this work, that it would be allowed.
Subject to the fire district.
Of course.
I, I don't prefer it, but if it's the only way it's going to let it happen, then.
There it is. Okay, so that brings us to our last point of discussion here, which are the development impact fees. And we've, you know, received some real-life testimony on this point as well, so that's helpful, I believe. State law allows the collection of them. The interim ordinance requires that there be development impact fees for SB nine units, and they include both traffic impact and affordable housing in lieu fees. I think we're really mostly focusing on the affordable housing in lieu fees, but not entirely. So our options, and we have four this time, so keep that in mind. Keep the existing standards, require development impact fees for SB nine units, but exempt SB nine units that are smaller than 800 square feet, reduce or waive the inclusionary housing in lieu fee for SB nine units, but leave the other development impact fees as they are, or reduce or waive all development impact fees for SB nine units. All right, so for me, I, I think it's kind of contrary to the whole purpose of this, to, to assess a large affordable housing in lieu fee for a unit that is functionally a very small affordable housing unit, that seems to completely undermine the whole purpose of what we're doing here. But at the same time, I wouldn't want to reduce or waive all of them if you're building a much larger unit on a very large lot, because that doesn't seem to, it's not creating affordable housing. So I would like to see some sort of, again, flexibility or sliding scale of some sort. So if you're building, you know, something that qualifies as affordable housing in some, by some definition, and I don't think it should be whether it's 800 square feet or not, I, I think that pure square footage is not really helpful in that regard necessarily. But I, I think that there should be a distinction between a affordable housing unit being built and one that is not. And I am not in favor of assessing a, a affordable housing in lieu fee for an affordable housing unit. That's, that's, it doesn't fit in any of the A, B, C, D, but that's my opinion, so.
Starting out, I'll go for option C. I would prefer to waive the inclusionary housing, but keep the others. The entire exercise of SB nine is to increase the housing stock.
Okay.
And whether we start splitting hairs is whether this is affordable and this is not quite affordable.
Yeah.
At $300 to $400 a square foot construction, not very much is going to be that affordable, so.
I'm going to go for B and C. I think that the whole idea of these SB nine units is that they will make more affordable housing than otherwise. So inclusionary fee, I think, should not be applied to any of them. But if they're 800 square feet or less, it seems to me, then you just get into, as we've heard, a, just an economic, you know, consideration, that that can be a, a really, you know, difficult hurdle to get over. So I would say no inclusionary housing fee for any SB nine, but if it's under 800 square feet or less, no fees.
Okay, great. Commissioner Pickett?
Boy, I'm, I'm kind of between the B and the C.
Both of them.
I, I, you know, I, I think, yeah, the purpose of this is to get affordable housing, but I could see some greedy developer, and there are greedy developers somewhere, trying to squeeze the most out of it. But, you know, perhaps rather than saying exempt SB nine units that are smaller than 800, maybe we say 900, or 950. So hybrid between B and C, I don't, I don't know that we should just automatically exclude a unit because it's an SB nine unit, but based on the size of the unit, probably exempt them from it. So maybe we can go a little bigger than 800 feet to allow someone more flexibility. I mean, a thousand-foot unit is probably going to end up being relatively in the Walnut Creek market affordable. So I'd, I'd be somewhere in that, that range. I know that doesn't help you write it, but we'll see what you come back with.
Actually, through, through the chair, just, and we don't have, this is one where this is a, really a policy discussion or a policy decision, so we, staff have not made a recommendation, but as an added data point, the, the size, the, the floor area limitations for ADUs, which ranges from, I think it's 850 to 1,000 square feet, depending on the size of the lot, and bedroom count and the rest, there's a rough correlation with those size limits and what meets, what the current rental market, the, the, there, there's a rough correlation between the size of those units and what the current market rate rents in this market are, that are affordable to a moderate-income household. Meaning that, and this is why we can actually include some ADUs as, towards our, at least moderate, in some cases even low-income household, uh, unit production for satisfying our arena and satisfying the state. Oh, man, I'm really saying this poorly. There's a general assumption that, and this, this bears out with some actual numbers, that, that our current ADU limits generally result in rents that are affordable to at least moderate-income households. And so, for example, if you're looking for something to say, well, affordable units, even though they're not, you know, rent, income-restricted, affordable units don't have to pay the inclusionary fee, you might want to consider tying that to the, to the size limitations for ADUs.
Are, are we permitted to exempt them if they agree to a, an income limitation? In other words, if they dedicate the unit, their SB nine unit, to an affordable level by deed restriction, can we do that?
Yes, absolutely.
And exempt them from the, I mean, we're, if we're exempting them just because of the size of the unit, that doesn't necessarily dictate the rent that they're going to rent.
No, that, and that, that's, that is very true. So the, what we're talking about, at least with regard to the inclusionary housing fees, it is an in lieu fee. It's a fee in lieu of actually providing an income-restricted unit. And basically, our, our current regulations require that 10% of the units in a develop, in a housing development be restricted to incomes of, you know, moderate-income households, or 7% for low income. There's various, there's different formulas. And so, you know, somebody who's building, under our current regulations, an SB nine unit, they do have the option of just complying with our inclusionary housing requirements by making it an income-restricted unit. There's, you know, they have to, there's, they have to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city, and there's a whole process around that. But they can do that, in which case, they do not have to pay the fee in lieu. But it generally, for, you know, smaller number of units like this, because of the way the in lieu fee is calculated, it makes financial sense to just pay the in lieu fee.
Okay, so based on, on thinking as you were talking, I guess I would prefer B, and just say 800 feet or 900 feet. If they build it, they are exempt. So that's, that's where I am.
So I'm a little bit different than everybody else in the group, and that is to say that I think development impact fees in the city of Walnut Creek and all over the state of California are absolutely ridiculously high, and as a result of their absolutely ridiculous high costs, have driving prices for housing to be relatively unaffordable. And it's a component, there's all kinds of components, not the only thing. However, we live in a state where we've decided that we're going to have an impact fee regime, and we're going to have the mitigation fee act, and we're going to spend a bunch of time and effort trying to identify what kind of impacts housing has to our community, and that a new housing unit is going to pay for its, mitigate its impact. Now, I wish all the other uses and other industries had to pay their, all the impacts for the things that they do, but we don't, they don't. But if we're going to live in a regime where housing is going to be in that way, I don't see waiving the standard for an SB nine unit and saying, well, it has no impact and it doesn't have to pay for its fair share while everything else does. An SB nine unit is not an ADU. It's a new residential unit. And if it wants to be an ADU, then it can get the development impact fee and some of the connection fee waivers that are subject to an ADU. An SB nine unit is an additional unit on top of an ADU and on top of a junior ADU that somebody can build. And that's why I want them to be bigger. I want them to be 1,200 square feet, or 1,500 square feet, or whatever, so that they can afford to benefit from the extra fees that they need to pay, because they're a real residential unit and not an ADU. And just like we said, if they don't, if they're of a certain size, well, that ma, does that make them affordable by design? Well, I can't count them as affordable by design, they're not deed-restricted. If you want to be affordable by design and get the benefit of not having to pay that fee, be an ADU. Don't be an SB nine unit. Because the reason we should have this law is so that people come in and put two SB nine units, an ADU and a junior ADU, and they do it on their split lot and do it side by side. We should have eight units on these lots, and they should be crammed, and they should be incredibly highly developed, and all of those units then become affordable by design, and we have a bunch of affordable housing by design. and we have a bunch of affordable housing by design. And that's what this sort of wants to incentivize. Now, I know we agree that that's incredibly unlikely for all the reasons we talked about, but for me, if it's gonna be an SB9 unit, it's gonna pay its mitigation fees, or we should all just agree that mitigation fees, development impact fees, including inclusionary, is a stupid idea, and get rid of the entire regime, and decide that we shouldn't be subsidizing affordable housing, because that just raises the unaffordability, and so we get less and less small affordable units and more unaffordability. And so even though I believe that we should get rid of all the fees, I'm actually supporting that we keep the existing standard.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Needy?
I wanted to, I love the Turner Center for Housing. They have amazing surveys, and I've been following them about their affordability by design, whether something is deed-restricted and runs with the land or not. And so for a bit of context, I just wanted to pull up the 2023 maximum level rents by income category. I think Andy had talked about the moderate, so you're talking about a 1,200 square foot house. Let's just call it that, right? That's the biggest size of an ADU, so that's why I kind of went there. Maximum number of units of bedrooms is, say, two for a 1,200. The moderate rent is roughly 3,600 for a moderate 110% medium AMI. And so because of that reason, because per the data of what roughly rents in Walnut Creek are for a 1,200 square foot house, and that it can be rented out to meet that moderate AMI level, I'm kind of a hybrid with what everyone is saying that, I also don't like impact fees, by the way, Peter, so I feel you. I'm paying $200,000 per home of fees in another development. But I propose, if we did have to do it, just like the ADU law says, for 750 square feet or less, if we did something here that was 1,200 square feet or less, you waive the inclusionary, but you keep all the development impact fees, and anything greater, you keep the development impact fees, but then maybe reduce the inclusionary. So it's like a hybrid of what everyone just said.
All right. Is that helpful?
I'd like to ask for a little bit of clarification. I'm sorry to drag this out.
No, it's okay.
So there definitely seems to be, I would say that I'm hearing that you're all looking at the inclusionary fee differently than the other development impact fees, which, and those other fees are, for these are basically the parkland dedication fee, which I just calculated for a two-bedroom unit would be about eight, eight grand. And the traffic impact fee, which I was about to open that file up, I think that one's maybe about half that amount. I can't recall. So, you know, those are, because the art fee generally doesn't apply to these. So there's those fees, and then there's the inclusionary in lieu fee, which is, can be substantial. I think what I'm hearing from the commission is, at least with regard to the inclusionary fee, a majority consensus is basically waive that fee if, for smaller units. And the, what is a smaller unit, I've been hearing different numbers. My recommendation, if you wanted to do a threshold of a smaller unit, would be to match that of the ADUs, kind of a keep it simple sort of a thing, but also there is actually, you know, some justification behind that, as explained earlier. So I guess I would add, I want to break this into two questions, two parts. One is with regard to the inclusionary fee, is that the consensus of the commission that, you know, waive it for the smaller units and that smaller units generally is ADU-sized?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Seeing enough nods, great. And then for the other fees, you know, the parkland, and it's called parkland dedication fee, but, you know, we're generally not building new parks. It's really going into facilities in our existing parks and open space areas. But for the parks fees and the traffic impact fees, does the commission want those to just apply to all SB9 units, waive them for some, waive them for all? Where do you fall on that one?
I'd keep it.
Yeah, I'm inclined to keep it.
We should waive all fees on the entire city, every day.
Okay.
I second that motion. I'd like to point out that, you know, we can deal with city fees, but on top of this you've got EB mud.
Yeah.
You've got the sanitary district, and you've got the schools.
And we have no control over those.
Those are all huge.
Yep.
The parkland dedication fee looks pretty nice when you gotta pay an East Bay mud meter.
Yep.
Just remember that. It's hard for us to make anything affordable. You couldn't pay the fees and have them affordable.
Right.
Editorial.
So I, I just, I, I have a feeling there was perhaps something said in jest, but I don't want to make that presumption with the commission. So is there a consensus that the other fees, park and traffic, would apply to SB9 units?
I believe there's a consensus.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, I think we did it. I want to particularly thank you, Andy, for this really excellent explanation and for guiding us through this really complex issue. It's just amazing.
I have to share that with Heather Coleman. My name is the staff contact on the staff report, but that's because that's the template for our staff reports, but I will say that she was the, definitely the author of that report. I did a little bit of editing here and there, but Heather was the author of that report, and I think it was a great one, so just wanted to...
Well, thank you to both of you.
Credit is where credit is.
Thank you, Heather, and thank you, Andy. And I also want to commend this entire commission. I think our conversation has been thoughtful and helpful, and I think that, you know, we took a very difficult thing and very seriously, and we've really provided some very good impact, input based on our experience and the large amount of time we all spend looking at these things and thinking about them. And I really think it's an honor to serve on this commission with all of you, and I really appreciate that, so I just wanted to talk about that.
One more thing, Madam Chair. Very deep into one of the staff reports or one of the other exhibits was the idea that on an SB9, if you had two units on one lot, you could sell both differently, to sell the house, convey the house differently, and not have a fee simple to the land. And I would say that I don't like that idea.
Sounds very complicated, creating little condo projects or something. I don't know how that would work exactly, but, well, I actually do know how that might work, but I think it'd be hard to implement. So, all right, so I think we've accomplished our task here.
Yes.
Really great job. Really appreciate everybody's hard work and effort on this. So with that, I think we are done with Agenda Item Four, right?
Yes.
So are there any commission considerations for Agenda Item Five that we need to deal with today?
Uh, no.
Okay. And do we have any commission member and staff reports or announcements?
None from staff.
Okay, any commissioners like to?
Oh, actually, one from staff.
All right.
Very quick. We'll be taking the, a second, I think I mentioned this last week, perhaps, or the last meeting, but we're gonna be taking a second addendum to the adopted housing element to the city council this coming Tuesday. This is, provides some additional clarifying information and some greater specificity in some of the housing programs, as well as some strengthening of the housing programs in response to the comment letter we received from HCD. So our intent is that with the adoption of that addendum by the city council, that we would be able to receive certification of our housing element from the state. So just wanted to let you know about that.
Well, that is great news, so we will keep our fingers and toes crossed here, so really appreciate that. Okay, and with that, I think our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.